All right, good afternoon. We'll get started in a few minutes. Sound check?
I'm here.
All right, great.
I'm here.
And we'll get started in just a few minutes.
Fresh, fresh gazpacho.
What is that?
Looks like a smoothie.
It's a cold Spanish soup. It's got all kinds of veggies and spices in it. Chris just made it today.
Carrie, you're muted.
You're at the office, right, David?
I am, yes. Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. I've got six o'clock. So again, welcome to the Cabarrus County Board of Education work session, combined work session and business meeting on July 13th, 2020. We were in closed session, so we've got a couple of housekeeping items to finish up before we get into our regular meeting. But I wanted to do a roll call to make sure we have all board members in attendance on this call. Carolyn Carpenter, are you here?
I'm here.
Cindy Furtenbaum?
Here.
Laura Blackwell?
Here.
Barry Schumaker?
I'm here.
David Harrison?
Live from the Ed Center, I'm here.
Ollie Grimsley?
Here.
And I'm here, so we got all seven board members on this meeting tonight, today. So welcome. So we'll go ahead and we'll go through the housekeeping items from our closed session. We need a motion to approve the July 13th, 2020 personnel recommendations.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by David Harrison, second by Ms. Blackwell. All in favor of approving the personnel recommendations from July 13th, 2020, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, say no. Okay, that motion passes. We also had several closed session minutes that we've had throughout the last two months that we need to review and approve. And I guess there's also need to be confidential because they have personnel and student information in them. So I'll need a motion for, if you want to do it in a group, the closed session minutes of June 1st, the work session on June, it's June, whoops, sorry. June 1st work session, June 3rd appeal hearing, June 8th business meeting, June 8th or June 17th appeal hearing, June 25th budget amendment meeting, and then June 29th appeal hearing, and then July 1st deliberations.
Motion to approve and hold confidential.
Second.
So I have a motion by Ms. Furtenbaum, a second by Mr. Schumaker. Any further discussion on our minutes? Okay, let's vote on those. All in favor of approving that set of minutes, closed session minutes, and keeping them confidential, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, say no? Okay. That motion passed, those minutes passed. And we will move on to our regular meeting. So we have an agenda to adopt. That agenda is currently in the board docs. So I would need a motion and a second to approve that.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Harrison?
Second.
Second by Mr. Schumaker. Any comments on the agenda? Okay, let's vote on our agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
They oppose, say no? Okay, our motion passes, so we will move on to our discussion items. And we have several discussion items to talk about this evening. The first being our COVID-19 updates. And again, currently it looks like here in Cabarrus County, we have over 500 active cases, 13 folks in the hospital, and 33 that have passed away. And the numbers keep increasing, especially for North Carolina. I guess we have 87,000 now, over 1,000 in the hospital and 1,500 that have passed away. So a lot of discussion and questions about what's going on with the schools. Chris, do you want to give us an update?
Yeah, I think maybe the easiest thing to do is start. I guess we also want to say Emily Wagner's on, we can see Emily on. So this is her first official board meeting, so we want to welcome her as the Cabarrus County Teacher of the Year. And she now gets in the routine of being on the board. So welcome Emily, we're glad you're here and we appreciate you being on the meeting with us.
Thank you.
And we just thought that because this is a huge week, obviously, with public schools, that I think Mr. Schultz, if you want to, you can go ahead and start bringing up the presentation. We were going to go through, because of all the planning that has been done, we just thought, well, let's just go through the whole plan. We'll do that with the committees that we've worked on to try to make sure you guys are aware. And then when we're done, you can ask any questions that you have because it's pretty comprehensive. So to begin, I did want to say that just from some of the emails that I got today from faculty and from parents, there did seem to be a misunderstanding that the board was going to vote on a Plan A, B, or C tonight. I saw numerous emails to say, when the board votes tonight, dah dah dah. The board may choose to vote on some of the aspects of this. And Brian Shaw can talk about that if the board chooses to do that. But the A, B, or C is not something that the board created. That is something that the governor created. So this week, unless he decides to move that decision again, the governor has told us that he is going to place all systems in the state in either A, which is essentially all kids come for face-to-face instruction, much like it looked like before the pandemic, except there'll be some minimal social distancing. Plan B is essentially a hybrid with no more than 50% capacity in school buildings, and C, everything would be remote learning. So we'll come back to that in a minute, but I did want to clarify that just because I know there are probably some people participating that think the board is going to make an official vote on that. And all we're doing is trying to lay out how we will handle these. So when the governor puts us in a plan, that the plan will be available. So Mr. Schultz, sorry, I know I jumped ahead, if you'll go back one. Just to, again, lay out, we've been working pretty much around the clock for the last six weeks or so, trying to figure out every aspect of what opening school may look like because there's quite a few things to it. So there are eight committees that are listed here in front of you that have all broken off and met separately. They've had teacher representation, school representation, obviously their department representation as we've tried to figure out each aspect of that. So we just kind of start at the top, athletics and band has worked. And each one of these eight have had consultation with the Cabarrus Health Alliance. So I just want to say again, I know you guys have heard me say before, but I want to say again, they've been tremendous to work with. Anytime we call, they have answered, participated in, and really been a great resource for us. So and they've done that in this scenario, too. So athletics and band has had one, HR has had a committee, facilities and how we're going to handle that has had a committee, instruction and what that'll look like in A and B. Obviously instructional under C, kids plus and what that may look like, school nutrition and what that would look like, transportation and what that would look like. And then the whole child, which is really kind of the social, emotional, and the mental aspect of all that. So all of those committees have been meeting for the last six weeks because some of their stuff overlaps, but quite a bit of it doesn't overlap. So, you know, for example, a lot of bringing students to school begins with transportation. So figuring that out is related, and that's why we have school representation and health department representation. But in the end, they've worked on how we'll transport students and facilities, for example, has worked on what that may look like when they come back. So just want to make sure you guys know that. We're going to go through each one of those briefly, just to do an overview. We weren't going to go into in-depth, but so you at least know the main points that each one's worked on and where we're at right now as we wait for the governor to decide if we're going to be in Plan A, Plan B, or Plan C. And again, Plan A is minimal social distancing, all students come to school. Plan B means that essentially 50% of the students is the maximum that can be there at a time or be in a building. And according to the rules of the bus, which we'll come back to later, is only a third of students. So a 72-passenger bus, which is pretty standard, is really only allowed to transport 24 students, which means we can only put a third of the kids that we transport to school on a bus. And then Plan C, the buildings are closed, and we'd have remote learning, pretty much like we did from mid-March until the end of the year. So again, we'll begin with finance, which we did not have really listed up there. But as you guys are well aware, finance is a part of all these. And we also thought it would be good if Kelly kind of went over the funding for that, because there is some state and federal funding and where we're at and why we've done a few of the things that we've done. And then we'll go through those eight committees. So Ms. Klutz, thank you.
Good evening, board. So as Dr. Louder said, you know, finance and money touches everything. So we kind of want to get that out of the way before we get into the details of the presentation. I'll talk about three areas. We'll talk about COVID funds specifically, FEMA reimbursement, and our fund balance. So going back to our COVID funds, I call them COVID funds. There's CARES Act funds, there's some state allocated funds. But in general, I'm going to put them in a bucket and call them COVID funds. We have very specific pots of money, some are generic, some are specifically to support school nutrition, some for summer learning, some for school health support, some for devices. But in its entirety right now, as I make a little list, there's about $8 million of funds that have been allocated related to COVID for these specific uses. There's those funds. With the FEMA reimbursement, that's something new to schools, but we are tapping into that allocation, too. We should be able to get reimbursed for all of our PPE equipment. We'll also get reimbursed for the excess wages that had from March to current or even ongoing. So that time and a half that we paid our essential workers that had to be on site, we can get reimbursed for that. And then obviously cleaning equipment and that kind of thing, we can get reimbursed through FEMA. So I'm working through the process of doing all of that. And finally, our fund balance. So we do have a healthy fund balance. Our fund balance was good prior to this year. And with the COVID funds and the related funds that are coming down, that we essentially could move over into local by reimbursing local for expenses, we have increased our fund balance even more. So there's the general fund balance, and then there's the enterprise funds fund balance. So you've got your child nutrition and your kids plus fund that are both have fund balances. So child nutrition had a healthy fund balance going into this. We have had to get into that fund balance sum. But they still, at the end of the day, they're in a decent place, a comfortable place with their fund balance. Now, kids plus, we had to deplete most of their fund balance. And so we'll be watching them, and there are other funds, federal funds, that we may need to supplement them with. Overall, our general fund balance, we're in a good position. There's so many unknowns with all of this right now. But honestly, I can't imagine us being in a better or more healthy position. So I think we're in the best place that we can be under the circumstances.
Good evening. The instructional team had two committees. We had a Plan A and a B, and also Plan C. So as Dr. Louder spoke to a little bit earlier, Plan A is minimal social distancing. So in this plan, teaching and learning would look very similarly to the way it did prior to March 13th. The exception would be that we would put measures in place for social distancing. Plan B is extremely difficult to figure out. And Plan B, only 50% of students are allowed in a school building at one time, and 33% for transportation. And so Plan A and B, that was one combined team. Plan C was remote learning. And our state legislatures come out with requirements for Plan C that detail what our remote learning should take into consideration. So I'm going to review that over the next several slides. So as I mentioned, work groups A and B were combined, and there were multiple things that we needed to consider. The very first thing that we had to take in consideration specifically for Plan B would be our scheduling options, because we knew that the schedule would drive all of the other considerations. But our team worked on social, emotional learning, how we will recoup instruction. We discussed our blended learning models, how we will work through instructional planning and instructional delivery, what type of expectations needed to be in place for students and staff, what considerations we needed to take in to ensure that our students were having the best experience possible, what things would look like from a parent and family perspective, and of course, communication. So when looking at Plan B, we knew that there were several things that we had to consider. The first thing that we had to ensure is that there was sufficient social distancing with at least six feet between people at all times. The other thing that we had to do was limit the density of people in our school facilities. And you'll see it says transportation vehicles, that's not a typo. We struck that out because our guidance has changed. When our group first met, we were looking at 50% on both transportation and in school buildings. But later, guidance has come out a couple of times, and now we have to limit it to 33%. And so Mr. Whitaker will talk a little bit about transportation later on in this presentation. And our plan must be consistent across grade spans. One of the things that our group did is we had to identify the priorities in terms of our scheduling. So we asked members of the team, and again, members of our team were teachers, central office staff, and school-based administrators. And so here you see the first, second, third, and fourth priorities, and they're all listed there, what the folks actually put. And then the number off to the side is the number of times that things were mentioned. So now what I would like to do is run through all of the options that we considered. And towards the last couple of slides for my section, I will share the option that we are recommending for Plan B. So with all the considerations that we had to take into consideration, along with all of those must, this is our first option, and we're calling it strategic selection. So in this option, we had three different ways that we would provide instruction, face-to-face, remote learning, and then tutoring, which would happen on Fridays. So in this plan, students in grades kindergarten, first, second, and third, grade six and nine, and our centralized EC placements would come to school every day, Monday through Thursday. Students in grades four and five, seven and eight, 10, 11, and 12 would not come to the school building Monday through Thursday, but would instead participate in remote learning. On Fridays, we would provide the opportunity for those students that were participating in remote learning to come into the school building and also receive hands-on experiences such as CTE. We decided against this option. Now, the next several options that I will speak to, we did not include it on every slide, but our centralized EC classes will attend the maximum number that our school buildings would be open. So in our first option, it was Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Excuse me, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. In this option, students would come to school Monday through Thursday, but instead, we would be taking a look at how we would utilize our facilities. The easiest example to give is Weddington Hills Elementary School, Winkler, and Wes Cabarrus High School, since those schools are clustered together. What we would do is take the students and break them apart, remembering that we could only utilize 50% of our facility. So in the elementary school, they would house Monday through Thursday kindergarten, first, second, and third grade students only. The middle school would be utilized for students in grades four and five, and the high school would be utilized for students in grades six, seven, eight, and nine. Students who were in grades 10, 11, and 12 would not participate in face-to-face instruction. Instead, they would be remote, except for the opportunity to come in on Fridays for tutoring or hands-on instruction. The committee decided against this option. And option three, the committee really liked this option, but we ran into some problems with this one. And option three, students are broken into two tracks, track A and B. Students in tracks A participate in face-to-face instruction on Mondays and Tuesdays. And then on Wednesdays, they would be remote, and Thursdays and Fridays. Track B would attend face-to-face instruction on Thursdays and Fridays, and would be remote Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. So essentially, all students in Cabarrus County schools would have two days of face-to-face instruction and three days of remote. The committee decided against this option because of the transportation barrier. This option breaks students into three different tracks, A, B, and C. And they would be attending school Monday through Thursday, with Fridays, all students participating in remote instruction. So the way this option works is on Week 1, the first week, students in track A would attend Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, while students in track B and C would be participating in remote instruction. On Week 2, it would be track B's turn to come for face-to-face instruction. And on Week 3, track C. We liked this option because it broke students into three different groups, which would allow for transportation. However, the committee decided against this option because the group felt it was too much time in between face-to-face instruction. It was too long of a gap, and teachers would have to work really hard to work with students that they hadn't seen in such a long time. We also decided against this option because of the work burden it would put on our teachers. Keeping in mind that while our teachers were providing instruction for face-to-face, they would also have two other groups that would be participating remotely, and they would have to provide instruction for those students as well. So we decided against this option. And option 5, we really tried to think outside of the box and started thinking, maybe we can do something for our elementary students while middle and high school were on a different option. So in this option, what we did is we were trying to maximize the number of days that younger students were in the school building. So students in grades K-2 are broken into two tracks. So on Monday, students in track A in K-2 would attend along with all third-grade students. So on Monday, only track A students with all third-grade students. On Tuesday, that same track of kindergarten, first, and second-grade students would attend, but all fourth-grade students would come instead that day. On Wednesday, we would switch to track B, kindergarten, first, and second-grade students, and all fifth-grade students. Thursday, K-2 track B, with grades 3 through 5 coming in for remediation, those students that needed extra help. And then on Fridays, all students in grades 3 through 5 would attend with K-2 remediation. While this option worked good mathematically in terms of numbers of students coming into a building, we felt it would be extremely difficult to communicate to families, and there may be a lot of confusion in terms of when students would come to school. We also felt like it would be very difficult for families that had students at the elementary level who would attend different days. So the committee decided against this option. This was our first round of options that we went through. So on the next slide, we had a feedback loop. So what happened would be our committee met, and then our level directors did a wonderful job going back and speaking with the building-level administrators, assistant principals and principals. We had our senior leadership meetings, and then would come back to our work group. And so in that feedback loop, we came up with several barriers with those first options that I just shared. The number one barrier was transportation. I mentioned how the regulations changed slightly. So that became a barrier, trying to figure out how to maintain 50% or less in a building while only providing transportation for 33% of students on any vehicle. The other barrier that we ran into, the feedback that we got back was nobody liked the idea of families being split between tracks. I talked a little bit about communication and the barriers there and tried to keep it simple. Schedules and tracks varied by level. Child care continues to be a barrier. And then the balance of our teachers' teaching face-to-face and remotely. So these are our next set of options that we came up with, that we just wanted to share. And then we're getting really close to the option that we selected. So we decided ultimately that we had to stick with the three tracks, dividing students into three tracks, A, B, and C. In this option, all students would attend face-to-face one day a week. The teachers would work from work two to three days a week. However, on this option, because we were using on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, our holidays and teacher workdays fall a lot on Mondays and Fridays. So the amount of missed instruction was problematic. So we decided against this option. In this option, we use a six-day rotation, and students are coming back-to-back two days a week. In this option, we use a six-day rotation, and students are coming back-to-back two days a week. The work group committee really liked this option because we got to see students more often. However, the amount of time between seeing different tracks became problematic. The other problem with this option is, because it is on a six-day rotation, there's only five school days in a week, the day that students would come would change every week. So, what I mean by that is, on the first week, students in track A would attend on Monday and Tuesday, but then, they would not come back to school until that following Tuesday, Wednesday. So, every week, the days that they attended would be different. The other problem with this is, there was not a remote learning day built-in for teachers, meaning an opportunity for teachers to make sure that they're catching up, having an opportunity to provide both that face-to-face and remote learning, and plan for that. So, we decided against this option. So, our recommended option is what you see in front of you. So, it's on a five-day rotation, we're utilizing the five days of school. Students are split into three tracks, A, B, and C. So, in this plan, we would divide all students in grades K through 12 into three different tracks, A, B, and C. This provides an opportunity for students to be on a single track if they're in a family. It provides the opportunity to have face-to-face instruction one day a week. Our students are able to attend on a consistent day of the week. So, on every Tuesday, students in track A know they're going to school. We put that on our calendar, and there's only one issue that comes up in November with Election Day, so we would make a change there. In this option, most teachers will work two or three days a week from work. It provides an opportunity for teachers to have a remote day to provide synchronous instruction. So, on Mondays, the expectation would be that teachers would be providing videoconferencing instruction with either individual, small group, or whole class, all on Monday, and then face-to-face at least one day a week. So, students would have interactions with their teachers at least two days a week. And then, it provides an opportunity on Fridays, what we would do was ask that our principals not hold meetings during the instructional day on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays. Remember, because our teachers will be responsible for providing instruction. So, an example would be, if I'm a biology teacher, on Tuesday, I have my track A students face-to-face with me. But my students, a third of my students, I would only have face-to-face. But the other two-thirds of my students will be participating in remote learning. While students in tracks B and C on that Tuesday may have questions, but if the teacher's teaching face-to-face, they need that time, their planning time, to be able to respond to emails, answer questions, grade papers, provide feedback, all of that. So, the idea would be not for students, excuse me, teachers to be burdened down with meetings on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, but Fridays, they would have the opportunity to plan and meet with their administrators and their other grade-level teammates in order to plan for the following week's instruction. This option also provides an opportunity to bring students in Fridays after several weeks after we get started. So, let's talk a little bit about what the teacher's schedule would look like. So, for K-8, our core teachers, which would be math, science, reading, and math, math, science, reading, and social studies, excuse me, would work two days a week from work. So, students would be split up if they're in K-8. If a homeroom class would only be split into 50%, this still allows us for the social distancing, but it also minimizes the number of teachers that are in the buildings at one time. Our, next slide, sorry. So, K-8 core teachers will either work Tuesday, Wednesday, or Wednesday, Thursday. All other teachers, 912 core, and our K-8 encore teachers also included in this would be our EC teachers, and instructional support would work three days a week, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. They would be working in the buildings on these days. The reason for this, in high school, it is impossible to split a high school schedule any other way other than splitting it into thirds. So, again, if I'm a biology teacher, on my first block, I will have one-third of my students on track A Tuesday, the next third on track B, and the next track on Thursday. So, the teachers in high school will teach their exact same schedule, but their students will be split into thirds. K-8, I'm sorry. K-8 encore teachers and all other teachers will, again, work Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. The reason that teachers would work three days a week, there are not as many encore teachers as there are core teachers, so that minimizes the number of teachers in the buildings. But these teachers also teach a larger number of students. So, when students are in the building, those teachers need to be in the building as well. From a student's perspective, really quickly, if you're, again, I said this earlier, if you're a track A student, you come on Tuesdays, Wednesdays is track B. Next slide. And Thursday is track C. I talked a little bit about the opportunity to come in for face-to-face a couple of weeks in if the governor announces Plan B. So, this is what this would look like. During the first week, once we got into this, this would not start at the beginning of the school year, but later on, we could offer the opportunity for students to come in on Fridays. So, an example would be, on track A, students would come face-to-face on Tuesdays, and maybe Fridays, track B, Wednesdays and Fridays, and track C, Thursdays and Fridays. Okay, now that I've talked about our schedule, I'm going to now jump to Plan C. And that's speaking primarily to our remote learning plan. So, in any of our plans, Plan A, Plan B, or Plan C, there are remote learning days. So, in Plan A, if you will recall, we are required to have at least five remote learning days. In Plan B, what I just shared, students would be participating in remote learning four of the five days. And if we're on Plan C, we are in remote learning 100% of the time. Well, there are 15 legislated components for any time that we have remote learning days. And so, here are those components. And we have a plan that is very detailed. We shared that plan with you on Friday. And we've also sent this plan out to our advisory groups for feedback. So, you see the components here, and here are the remaining components.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Lauder. This slide represents our team's process for building protocols. The slides reflect the process and how we determined and established the needs and materials, and also the procedures moving forward. I want to note that the team quickly decided that we needed to use simplicity as our goal and guide. And our overarching purpose in this is maintaining safety for student, staff, and the public. Our team met a total of six times, three times as a group. We broke down into sub-teams because of the many different areas we had to cover. And these team members were made up of each grade level, facility and custodial managers, directors, healthcare professionals from Cabarrus Health Alliance, and a cabinet member. And we believe that the diversity of this team helped us to come up with debate, an argument, educated argument, I'd like to say, to determine these needs. What will work and what wouldn't work. So, as we ran through as many scenarios as all of our combined experiences could come up with, we were able to strategically plan how we would use student numbers and manage sanitizing school spaces, particularly high-touch areas such as door hardware, restrooms, water fountains, and reception areas, or areas where we would interface with the public. We also established that we, in facilities, have a quick reaction force, or in other words, a small team that would go out during any outbreak or any identified positive cases to immediately clean the facilities and the area. Should be noted as well that facilities already has emergency teams set up for inclement weather or any other times of manpower necessity. And in summary, I just want you to know that we have the materials and equipment to open the schools. We do have materials and equipment on order, and we will do subsequent orders to maintain the supplies that the schools and staff and students will require in all the activities that will go on. We will be fluid, and we'll always be ready for change, because this will be an ever-changing process. Thank you.
Good evening, board members. If you look at the transportation team consisted of individuals that were at the school level, as also members of the transportation staff, they met a total of three times. And in front of you, or the Plan B consists of, you see that that is state and local requirements, operational needs, and then the timeline. Under the state and local requirements, we came up with 22 students per bus. That works out to be one per seat, and household siblings can sit together. They'll be cleaning each AM and PM route, and the drivers will wear PPE. Under the operational tab, once the rosters and the bus passes are sent out, schools assign students to attend days, to what days to attend. And I say day and days, that's depending on which recommendation you go with. The entire route will be driven to ensure that no students are missed. Under our timeline, we elected to look at July the 24th, which would be the last day to request bus transportation. July the 29th, all routes developed and finalized. And July the 30th, the routes and the rosters will be sent to the schools for student assignments.
Good evening. For the first bullet, in keeping with the recommended safety and sanitation protocols, we're planning to deliver meals to students in their classrooms or hallways. Meals will be individually packaged in order to minimize any potential for contamination. Those meals will be prepared and packaged in the kitchen and served directly to the student, then in the hallway. Staff will continue to follow all of our standard safety and sanitation guidelines that we currently have in place, as well as PPE required under the current protocols. Regarding transactions, again, in order to minimize contact, transactions in the hallways or classrooms will continue to be cashless. Parents will be encouraged to either send in payments in advance or utilize our online payment system, K-12 Payment Center. This will also facilitate faster service, which will aid in maximizing the instructional time, as well as keeping the contact time to a minimum. And as far as service, if we reopen under Plan B, USDA will be allowing all students to eat at no cost to them through August 31st. And DPI is requesting an extension of this through the end of the school year. In addition, DPI is seeking a waiver in order to be able to provide meals to students on any days where the entire district is in remote learning. We're also exploring the possibility of serving students who are remote learning on school days. Of course, if Plan C is enacted, we expect USDA to extend all necessary waivers to allow continuation of the current emergency meal program.
Good evening, board members. HR would like to provide a brief overview of three major areas that tend to generate the most questions. These including staffing, return-to-work transition, and leave options. From a staffing standpoint, HR has continued recruiting staff and processing new hires virtually. The district has participated in 15 virtual fairs since March. Cabarrus County Schools has also hosted a virtual teacher fair on April 23rd that was a huge success with 421 candidates participating. One of the big events that we have coming up in August is our new teacher orientation. The orientation typically includes approximately 250 new educators who participate, with about 80 to 100 of those being first-year teachers. This year, our new teacher orientation will take place virtually on August 3rd, 4th, and 5th. The next area that generates a lot of questions is the district return-to-work transition. Until the governor approves one of the three plans for the reopening of schools, it is difficult to provide a specific process for the 2020-24 school year. The district continues to seek guidance from our local health alliance, the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, and the CDC around safety protocols for our employees. HR has a dedicated webpage with employee safety resource links and safe workplace reminders for home health screening. Leave options for employees who are in a high-risk category as defined by the CDC is another frequent question. The North Carolina State Emergency Leave expired at the end of the day, June 12th, for 10-month employees, and on June 15th, 2020, for our 11- and 12-month employees. All 11- or 12-month employees who are unable to return to work and do not have telework options must consider other leave options effective June 16th. There may be temporary federal options available for a qualifying reason under the Families First Coronavirus Response Act. Federal options that may be available include the federal emergency paid sick leave, up to 80 hours, and/or federal emergency family and medical leave for lack of childcare due to COVID. For example, if I have been ordered to quarantine for 14 days by the Health Department or a medical professional, then I may be eligible for the 80 hours of federal emergency paid sick leave. Our hope is that the State Board of Education will approve additional state emergency leave for the fall. Leave is handled on an individual basis, since it is specific to the employee and confidential. HR has made training available for all staff on these leave options through our Safe Schools platform, and information is posted on our website. In addition to these temporary federal leave options that will expire December 31st, employees will follow their normal process for requesting leave, leave of vacancies, and FMLA. HR has a dedicated email address for COVID-related requests or concerns that has been published to all employees. HR will continue to collaborate with the local and state authorities to ensure the health, safety, and well-being of our employees. Thank you so much for your time and the opportunity to share.
Good evening, everyone. Kids Plus has been busy exploring the ways that we can meet the anticipated need from our community and from CCS employees for childcare on the remote learning days. Under a Plan B scenario, one of the options that we're exploring is that of offering full-day programs at several locations across the district. And this would be in addition to our normal before-and-after-school programs at each of our elementary schools. One of the limiting factors is our workforce. Many of our employees are either part-time, and/or they have other obligations, work or family, outside of their normal working hours with us. We've recently surveyed all of our employees and compiled that information, and we're using that to assist us as we plan for additional hours of operation. The next item we've been working on is identifying those potential locations for the full-day programs. And there are several criteria that we're using as we consider that in the process. That is, building space availability, the size of the current after-school program, and accessibility across the district for families. Our capacity for enrollment will be limited based on available staffing and available space. Of course, we're making an effort to prioritize connecting the services with those in need. Of course, we're making an effort to prioritize connecting the services with those in need. Once we have more information regarding the need and the student attendance days based on which option we choose and which days the students will be attending school, that will help us determine capacities at each location. And we plan to follow our normal enrollment process. And of course, in all of this, in the planning and eventual operation, our top priority will remain student and staff safety and well-being. We'll continue to follow the requirements and recommendations from the North Carolina Department of Child Development and Early Education, the Department of Health and Human Services, and the Cabarrus Health Alliance. We will plan to continue our thorough cleaning and sanitizing processes as normal. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Board, and Dr. Lauter and colleagues online. We're going to present now a comprehensive social-emotional learning plan that's focused on serving students, engaging families, and supporting our staff. For students, we are promoting resiliency, coping skills, and healing for our kids through social-emotional learning at all levels to reach all of our students as they re-enter school schedules and environments. We're targeting, we're providing more targeted and intensive supports for those circumstances when students need more than the school staff is prepared to provide. And we're engaging community partners when a higher level of care or service is necessary. As we shift our focus to engaging families to promote well-being, we will be ensuring that parents and caregivers are aware of the social-emotional content being delivered throughout the district every week. We'll be sharing resources for increased caregiver support, as well as specialized parent information sessions. We anticipate that these sessions will be more apt to be delivered online as opposed to in-person. For our staff, we will be promoting self-care planning for all staff. We'll be sharing local and national resources for challenging circumstances and situations. And in all cases, we'll make sure that staff, students, and caregivers are aware of options for additional support. Thank you.
Good evening, Board members. It's been quite the eventful and stressful summer for athletics and bands trying to plan for a safer turn for summer workouts. We have received guidance from the North Carolina High School Athletic Association. We have been in consultation with the CHAC team, which includes the Cabarrus Health Alliance. And we've also formed and met numerous times with our own Athletics and Extracurricular Activities Task Force team, which that is made up of our Deputy Superintendent Brian Schultz and our Fine Arts Director, Bart Tolson, myself, high school and middle school principals, high school and middle school athletic directors, and athletic trainers. And plus, we have also brought in a physician, Dr. Kevin Burrows from Atrium Health, and Scott Behringer, which is the manager of Sports Medicine at Atrium Health as well. So we've got a really solid team put in place, and we feel really good about our current status as far as specific plans for those workouts to take place, should they take place any time in the near future. We have great plans for check-in, for workouts, and for exiting the workouts. We have been through sanitation training for all our schools. And currently, we have a target date set for next Monday, July the 20th, to start summer workouts for fall sports and band only. Our possible announcements that may affect this start date could obviously be the governor's announcement this week regarding the start of school. And we also feel like the High School Athletic Association will then follow up within a day or two also regarding announcement pertaining to whether fall sports will actually start on the targeted date of August the 1st. So we certainly want to get these kids back out and participating and providing them the opportunities that they deserve. We're in prayer mode and finger-crossing mode and the holding-of-breath mode, and we just want to hope for the best in this situation. So we're in a wait-and-see mode. Thank you.
And I just want to say how much I appreciate all of our committee members and everybody that's worked so hard on all these elements. I hope you guys can tell they've been working their tails off to make this something that we can actually pull off, depending on which one of the three the governor decides to work on. I know that's a lot of information, but it's, to be honest, quite a bit of planning and a whole lot of areas to figure out how we might make it work. So we will try to, I'll try to answer your questions, and if we get really deep, then I may have to call for a life preserver, depending on which area it is. So anybody have any questions that we can try to answer before we move on?
Okay, Board members, questions?
Well, I'll start, if that's okay.
That'd be great, Holly.
Okay. So I know this is a really comprehensive question, but, and if you don't have answers tonight, but I was just curious if any of the information discussed during some of these meetings addressed, like, how do we start looking at scholarship, athletic scholarship qualifications, and all the things that happen in high school throughout the year that need participation? And where will we be with that kind of information as far as, how will we do that? I just, I feel like we're just trying to, and I mean, not that it's anybody's fault, but we're trying to get through this whole process, but is there a long-term looking at how this whole overall process, however we reopen, is going to impact those types of issues?
Yeah, so I think, I mean, you know, there's not a specific answer to that, as you said, because it's pretty comprehensive, but it will be a statewide issue, or at least we anticipate it'll be a statewide issue. And really, we anticipate it's going to be a national issue. So I think, like always, you'll have coaches, local, college, everybody working on what will this look like in a totally different environment. So I don't know that we have a specific answer for it, but I assure you that coaches will be working and trying to make sure that kids benefit to the extent that they can. I know it'll be a weird time. And they already are working on some of that, athletic directors, coaches, and students are already kind of working on some of that. I don't know, Mr. Tyson, do you have anything to add to that? I don't know if you guys have talked about it specifically. I don't want to call you out, because I know there's not a specific answer, but I also know that the coaches were worried about this from minute one, so it's something they're working on to make sure that, you know, kids don't not, kids don't get put in a bad situation or a worse situation, I guess.
No, we're highly concerned about that. We want to see these kids have the opportunities. Like Dr. Lauter and I have talked before, we're concerned that, you know, athletic scholarships are some of the only ways that some kids get to go to school, and they need those opportunities to be able to earn those scholarships. So that, he's right, that is going to be a national debate, especially if some other states start canceling football or canceling basketball. That's going to be a very hot topic. We are in hopes that we'll be able to have a season, whether it's moved to the spring or what have you, but we don't have an answer right yet. We're just kind of on hold, and we will certainly be fighting for these kids to have opportunities. I can tell you I will be.
Okay, thank you. And I know that's a really loaded question, but I just, and I know everyone is equally concerned about all that's going on with this process, with how it's going to impact kids, and it's not just athletic scholarships, you know, I know it's academics as well, but, you know, I was just kind of curious if, I'm sure it's going to be a push-down from the federal to the state to the local, and then from the universities down, you know, to the high, you know, just that push-down, I just hope somebody is out there watching, you know? If we're out of school for three months, what does it look like for this? If we're out of school for six months, what does it look like this? If we're out of school and we're remote learning for the whole entire year, and they lose a whole year, what does it look like? I just, you know, I know it's a really big deal with all the different areas that this has impacted, but it just bothers me that, you write, your statement was exactly where I was going. There are a lot of kids that would never see college for not the athletic scholarships, and that just is unfortunate that this whole thing is happening. But I just hope that there, whatever the overall impact of why we graduate kids from high school to begin with, to get them to wherever they need, is that long-term vision of whichever area that impacts, somebody's out there paying attention.
Holly, do you have anything else? Okay, Carolyn, go ahead.
Yes, I have two questions, and one of them may be directed at Dr. Lauter or our attorney. All right, the governor comes back, and he says, okay, I want y'all to go into Plan B. Well, what if we're still looking at our numbers in Cabarrus County, where, as you mentioned earlier, today we're at 1,665 cases, but they've still been climbing? And we feel like for the safety of our students and of our teachers, and like the emails that we all received today, a lot of the teachers are still concerned for their safety of the students. And we decide, well, we think we still need to stay maybe remotely for maybe until October or, you know, November, and then go to maybe Plan B. If we decided to do that, instead of doing that, could we do that without being fined or something like that? Or would we still have to do that?
What the governor's plan, what we've been told so far, I guess it could change, I don't anticipate that, is A, again, is all students coming in, B is a hybrid, C is remote learning. That when the governor puts you in one, so let's say he puts us in B, that you can't go, you can go more conservative, but you can't go more liberal. Meaning like if he puts us in B, you cannot put all students in the building in Plan A, but you could decide to be more restrictive and make a Plan C if you decided to do that. So you can't be, you can't be more students coming in, but you could be more conservative if that's what you want to do. So could we say, well, the governor has put us in B, but we would like, we want to go to C anyway because we think locally that's the right call? Yes, we can do that.
And we wouldn't be fined, you say. We wouldn't, that couldn't fine us. But if we went to A, then that's the way we could be fined, or we could, could do that if we would do the opposite, correct?
Brian can answer. I haven't seen anything about being fined. I don't know what the penalty is if you did it, but we wouldn't be following the order if we did that, I guess is the way to say it.
Are you talking about the Education Secretary's comments, Carolyn?
Somewhere I heard that if we did, because I'd heard somewhere around the line that they could be fined if we, but, you know, we went against the order, there was possibility for fining. Now, maybe that's incorrect, going against the order of the governor.
Yeah, this is Brian Shaw. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
I mean, we're in uncharted waters here. As you know, there's some debate as to, some people would say that state law mandates opening in person, and that the governor has no authority to override that. I don't, I don't happen to be of that view. I tend to think if the government says there's an emergency, and this is what you do, then we can follow that. If, if the governor does indeed say, as Dr. Lauter is anticipating, and I think we all anticipate, that if you can go level, you can go to the authorized level, or you can go to a more restrictive level. If he says, I'd like him to specifically say that, and that would give us cover for doing that. I don't know what he's going to say. If somebody violates the governor or the state law, which supposedly mandates, you know, in-person attendance starting August 17, there are no provisions for penalties, so nobody knows what's going to happen. We just don't know. I, you know, I don't like to violate the law, so we just wait and see what the advice is. We can deal with it at that point. I mean, one thing I look at is, for example, the closest thing we've had is the calendar law. You know, there's, there's an argument that 14 or so school districts violated the calendar law last year. Well, nobody ever, nobody was ever punished for that, as far as I know. So this is very difficult times. I think if we just make a best, good-faith judgment based on health and education, then I don't see a, a fine coming down. You know, we just have to see whether the, anybody takes an enforcement action. It would have to be by the Attorney General or somebody. I don't, I don't see that happening.
Okay. My other question is, we're starting our virtual school this year, and I know that we have, we hired a principal for actually doing that. And what I, my curiosity, or what I was wondering, where would, would the teachers, I know that we don't know how many students are going to be signing up for it, we don't know what kind of enrollment we have, but the teachers that will actually be, you know, be teachers at this academy and everything, where will these teachers be housed? Because, you know, they will have to work out the plans to teach and everything. Do we know where there'll be housed or anything like that at this point?
Yeah, so one of the things we wanted to do tonight, we felt like if people said, hey, I want my child to go to the virtual school, and they may sign up for it and then find out after tonight, well, if we're in Plan B, that my student would be virtually, but we go in face-to-face one day a week, that some of the same people that said they wanted virtual school would actually prefer one day a week of face-to-face instruction because it's not that much different than virtual school. So we wanted to be able to kind of do this presentation and make sure the information was out there before we went down the road to the virtual school. The virtual school obviously is a new endeavor, and it's, you know, partially there to anticipate that some people are going to want that. Ken is the new principal for that, and as Brian said, and you guys know, uncharted waters, we're kind of figuring this out. But as a place to land while that happens, as we get it started, since there's not a senior class at West Cabarrus High School, then we talked to Mr. Smith about if he needed a place to meet with people, you know, whether that be students or parents or teachers, that there's some empty space there because a quarter of the kids aren't at West Cabarrus. So for now, while we're figuring that out, that's kind of his landing spot. Doesn't mean they're going to be there all the time or even very often, but because there's some extra space there, we thought that if he needs some, that he can use that space.
Okay, because, you know, when this does get started, teachers will have to do some planning and things, and that's why I was wondering. And again, we don't know how many, we don't know how many teachers, because, you know, students, that, that kind of, you know, has to, it all depends on how many students and everything. But that was my questions I think of right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carolyn. Barry, do you have anything?
All right, I'm on mute. I have several questions and comments. Chuck talked about the preparation of the facilities for the incoming staff and for the students, and, you know, the custodians, and will be treating the areas to make sure that they're as COVID-free or as sanitized as they can be. What about personal PPE for the staff? Will they be provided PPE? And I know that that's going to be difficult in an instructional environment, but at the same time, that's the only way I protect you from me. So if you can answer that question, and I'll get some more.
And so the answer is yes. As Kelly said before, some of the provisions for FEMA and state and federal is for PPE. So we feel pretty good about the funding sources for that. Kind of varies a little bit depending on, you know, the situation and where you're at, but the main thing is, are people going to wear masks? Faculty and students are going to be required to wear masks. There's really no other way to do that. I don't know if the governor will, will come out and say that one way or the other when he speaks, but the, the information has essentially said that kids with disabilities and/or some kind of medical, and employees that ultimately have a medical documentation wouldn't have to wear a mask, but everybody else is going to have to, pretty much, I mean, there is no other way to do that and make sure that our faculty is safe. So bus provisions are the same. It's been, if you're going to ride the bus, then you're going to have a mask on, you're only one person per seat. That's where that 33 comes about. So, I mean, I envision that most teachers are going to have, you know, be wearing a face covering, and kids are going to be wearing a face covering if they come back. But I guess depending on situations, if there's more that would be needed, or then that's something they'll work with their principal on. But we feel pretty good about being able to provide that. It just depends on, you know, what the need there is or what, what the request is. So, you know, that we're going to have everybody give them a mask or give them employees masks. We've already ordered a lot of those, too. That's not necessarily what you're asking, so I think if it goes beyond that, the answer is, what is it that people want and need and kind of feel that they're justified to have to be safe, and we're going to work with them and be able to do that.
Right. In addition to the mask, and of course, there's, a lot of places have gone to the barrier technology, some type of sneeze guard or some type of preventative measure to prevent people from breathing. to prevent people from breathing on them and creating a blockage. And is that, are those items that have been under consideration by your team to look at? And even on the bus for the, for the bus driver, uh, so that they don't come in direct contact with the, the riders coming on and off the bus?
Right, so those are all things, yeah, like you said, we've looked at. There are some things like buses, for example, where it actually may not be safe when you put some of those things in. Those are all things that we've looked at. But if you're, you know, the, if you're in a line that you may have that there, so are there gonna be like plastic cubicles in the classroom that separate people? No, there won't be. Um, but that's part of the reason we went with the one-third too, was to say, so if you have a class of 30, a teacher wouldn't have more than 10 students with that third that was in there and should be able to spread out in the room and meet all the social distance requirements. So we felt like it, it's a pretty good setup as far as meeting their requirements, but there may be individual situations that will require something more and they'll work with their principal, with HR, with facilities to, to be able to do that, whatever that may, um, you know, justify, if that makes sense.
So in regards to Kids Plus, um, there, there's, you know, the country is literally divided 50/50 on this issue because there's the parents that need their children to be at school so that they can go and, and, and have a job and to bring home enough money to keep things going. And then there's the others that are afraid of the situation in their household where they could bring home the disease and, and, and effectively hurt someone in their home. Um, do you think that there's an option that Kids Plus would be available or maybe working with some of our other, um, allies around the nonprofits around the, uh, the area so that we can provide longer childcare to, for our, for our parents that literally can't afford to go um, and have their children go once or twice a week and then they're stuck on these tracks where, and I, and I don't mean that in a derogatory way, so please don't misunderstand. But they're, they're now challenged because they have this track and now they, they can't really work because they're, they don't have the time at home that they need, so.
Yeah, so Amber's been working around the clock on that because it's certainly one of our biggest questions we've got from our staff and, and from parents. And as you guys know, Kids Plus is an enterprise, which basically means Kids Plus is a business, right? Like it, it has a bottom line, it has to kind of come out even, um, at the end of the day, which is not necessarily how lots of our other, um, our departments work. So the, the issue with that is that most of our, or all of our, almost all of our Kids Plus employees are part-time employees. They work in the morning, they work after school. And so what Amber's tried to do is to create as many, um, to find out, now I need full-time employees if I'm gonna cover that during the day. So can I have two sites, three sites, five sites, however that may be, where we can staff it and ultimately have enough people that, that want that provision? So, um, the, the ultimate answer, she's working on that all the time to try to say, yeah, we feel comfortable that we can offer it at these five locations and then take people in. But it, it always is generated by people who sign up for it. So we'll get, as you guys know, in the past, people say, hey, we want Kids Plus at middle school. And so Kids Plus usually says, okay, well, let's see if we can do that. And then if five people sign up for Kids Plus at middle school, it's not gonna make. But if 105 people sign up for it, then it might be at two or three locations. Kind of the same thing here, like she's gotta figure out what she's comfortable with and what she can staff, and then she's gonna put as much as she can out there, but it's still gonna need to be full or at least support itself. Um, so sometimes people say that they need that, but then find another option. So she's gotta dance around all that and she, she really understands that need. She understands the public and our, our faculty needs, but it's a little bit of a guess. So she's doing everything she can to provide as much as possible.
Well, and along with that guess is, you know, of, of course, we do have some very strategic allies in the community, different nonprofits like the Boys and Girls Club, the YMCA, and, and there's innumerable others that are out there to provide us assistance. So they could probably help us transcend the, 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 the demand need either on either side. If we don't have enough labor, they might have the labor. So I think this is a really good opportunity for us to synergize with those organizations to make sure that we do have this, because getting our families whole in every possible way is, you know, is a huge goal, and I know that we're, we're, we're all struggling with this detail. Um, of course, back to our teachers, you know, and I asked this question privately earlier, but, um, we want to make sure that they're protected in every way we can. And there's innumerable scenarios to where a teacher could come down with COVID in the classroom or from home, and then they're in this 14-day quarantine. And so we're hoping that the FF-CRA is well-publicized. I know it only has 80 hours, but there's a longer-term 66% that is out there and they need to understand that they can get 66% and possibly with the other third without pay. But there's, there's all kinds of options and hopefully they'll be available. We just really need to make sure that they are fully aware of all the options that the federal government's provided as well as, and we, and I know y'all are petitioning the state in every way to try to, it's the superintendent group, but, uh, stay after them and, uh, keep us, keep us posted.
Yeah, to clarify that a little bit, because you're right, we've gotten that question a lot. And people kind of say, well, if a kid in my class is, gets COVID, am I gonna be quarantined? Do I have to use my sick time? So the answer today is, there is federal COVID leave that is ultimately 80 hours. It expires December 31st. So for now, first semester, you'd have two weeks for that quarantine where you wouldn't have to use your sick time. It expires December 31st, but it certainly could be extended, right? Um, the leave that lots of our employees use, bus drivers, for example, when there was no bus to drive because the kids weren't coming, they used emergency leave that the state of North Carolina provided, that expired in June, but could be, could come back. So that would be an option. And then you spoke about essentially COVID FMLA, which is a specific thing, again, by the federal government, um, or that ultimately if you go out where you get 66% of your pay. So all of those are options that could be in place all year. They could go way halfway through the year, they could be implemented by the state. Each one of those individual situations, as Dr. Cohen said earlier, is why when somebody has that question, they can ask it of that, that HR question to find out, well, it's provided, because it ultimately is gonna get down to an individual situation. But there are quite a few provisions of leave that you'd be able to access without using sick time under the current law, but obviously that's subject to change.
Yeah, and I think the beauty of the, the COVID FMLA, at least the way I've seen it practiced at our, at, at the place that I'm employed, which is another state agency. Um, I, I have an employer right now, is on it and is taking the 66%, but is not taking any leave. So he's not using leave as a result of this, he's just taking what he's got and he's gonna live on the, the two-thirds, and I guess he's got something else going on. But the, the thing is, is there's this function that they don't have to use up all their leave time to stay somewhat whole, maybe not completely, but.
Right, it's always predicated by what their personal situation is. So I would just say, always reach out to our HR department, that's why they're there, to help people, you know, figure out what options they have available then, which right now is quite a few.
Yeah, thank you. And, and that, for everyone, it's, it's, it's a really tough time. We don't want to be divisive and a lot of people believe in a lot of different things, but you've got to remember, protect someone else from yourself and make sure that you know that you're the carrier and think of yourself as the carrier. That way you stay masked up and, and, and protect others from you. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Barry. Cindy, do you have anything?
Yeah, thanks, Rob. So my colleagues on the board have already said quite a few things. I have one question, and then, Mr. Chairman, I would like for you to call in our teacher liaison and get her thoughts from the teaching, uh, perspective.
I will make sure I'm given this opportunity to speak. I do want to get the rest of the board members to have their opportunity.
I just want to make sure Emily's warned that she can be thinking. So as my question is about, under options B or C, we need to do our device distribution. Um, and I've asked for some data, which we'll get later this week, uh, to see where we are from everything being turned in already. Um, I know, you know, in previous meetings, we've improved, um, a lot of purchases to fill in the gaps on the devices that we may have. So will device distribution under B or C happen before school starts? In the first week of school? How will we handle those normal curriculum nights we have during the first week teachers are back? And then device distribution?
Right, so again, some of that will be determined by, you know, what's going on local. I mean, if it was today, I would say all of the open house stuff is gonna be virtual. We're probably not gonna bring people into that, and I think schools are already planning for that. We've had a lot of questions in that situation. Um, and then device distribution, there's a, again, committees of all kinds of representation working on that. But if today we were to go, it would be very similar to what we did last year. You would figure out how to distribute devices for people to come in and pick them up. If we were completely remote in C, if we're in B and people are coming in once a week, we would probably do that as they came in. So again, a third of the kids would get theirs. Um, one of the other big questions with that is really K2, which as a general rule, kindergarten, first grade and second grade, um, is really not, um, you know, remote instruction is not how you begin a kindergarten class, right? It's not really how you begin ideally a ninth grade class, but it certainly is not how you begin a kindergarten class. So some of the K2 would be, um, working around, it may not be a device for the first, I'm just, you know, giving an example, but maybe for the four weeks, K2 would be using some things, packets of information that they would work on before we got to that. So ultimately, we'll figure out the quickest and the, the most efficient way to give those out, but also age-appropriate way to give that out and work around instruction to be able to do it. So it would either be, you know, if we were in C and students are never coming in, then you've got to figure out how to do that pretty, pretty close to August 17th. And if it, if we are coming in with B in thirds, then we would probably do that in the first week or two to make sure that we're, um, you know, face-to-face and giving a kid and being able to kind of quote, train them when we have that luxury. We didn't really have that luxury in the spring, we had to figure that out. Um, teachers and schools did a great job with that, but it wasn't the ideal way to do it. We just had to get those out. So again, that group is working on that. By grade level, it's a little different too, um, so each one of them have a plan, but it would be as early in the school year as we could get them out for all the obvious reasons.
Okay, thank you, Cindy. David?
Dr. Lauter, this kind of goes back to Barry's earlier question, and so Chuck might want to weigh in. I'm, I'm trying not to ask a hypothetical, but also in practical terms. Let's just talk about face masks. Kelly has implied, and I'm sure we have the funding, but do we have the suppliers for the things that the schools will need? And so if we have 5,000 employees and 35,000 students, and at any given time, you know, some numbers of those people will be on the campuses, do we have purchase orders in place and suppliers that will guarantee, um, that we will receive, say, 8,000 or 10,000 face masks a week? I, I know that sounds silly in a way, but, but I'm literally trying to think in terms of the supply chain. When the governor, um, announces which plan, um, he, he chooses, um, that's gonna be, that's gonna cause a run on all of the supplies that all the schools are needing to, um, comply with that plan. And so my question is, does Cabarrus County have the means, uh, set up with its suppliers to, um, get those things quickly and keep them coming, um, so that we can have a, it won't be a smooth, but, but a somewhat smooth, um, uh, implementation of the governor's plan? I hope you see what I'm trying to get at there, I'm just.
Yeah, so the, the short answer to that.
From how many temperature, uh, device, handheld devices do we have as kids come in the door? You know, all the, uh, actual equipment and supplies we'll need. Are, are we literally ready to, or will be ready to, um, purchase those somewhere out in the market?
Yeah, so the short answer to that is yes. As we said, some of it comes directly from the state. So the state has ultimately said, we're gonna get one thermometer, one kind of forehead scan thermometer for every 100 kids. Um, masks, yes, have been ordered. Um, so, yeah, I mean, ultimately, you're gonna ask Chuck if you have specific questions, but the answer is yes, those are already ordered, yes, we already have a bunch of them in. Um, what we've been told and expect to get some more details from the governor this week is the Department of Health and Human Services, um, takes on some of that stuff as far as, hey, here's your thermometers. Uh, Bobby Smith, who works for Cabarrus County Emergency Management, has also been a great resource to connect us to FEMA whenever we're available for that. Some of that money and supplies are ordered to make sure we have them. So, um, it's a question all of us have asked from the beginning, and Chuck's answer is that he feels like we're in good shape, sanitizer, mask, all the things that are there. Um, now, that doesn't mean at some point in the year you couldn't have a problem, but people anticipated six months ago that we were gonna be here and it appears like we're in pretty good shape with suppliers and somewhat on funding. And that may not last forever, but for now, there's, there's a money supply, um, from the state and federal government that, that we feel pretty good about.
And so do we feel like our, uh, our normal purchasing processes are adequate to handle all the extra stuff that we're gonna need to have on hand and to implement, uh, you know, on a weekly basis or, um, I'm just talking overall supply chain and the, the ability to have the source, the resources on hand to implement in the schools so that school instruction and, uh, teacher stress can, and can be as optimal as possible?
Yeah, so again, the processes are there, Kelly's worked on that too. And, you know, Kelly, obviously, no, no, you're not supposed to buy anything without a purchase order, but when there's an emergency, then Kelly can fix that emergency. So, um, the good news is, everybody's been working on that for months and months and knowing that we were gonna have this issue. Now, again, it doesn't mean it's all perfect, but feel good about supply, supply chain and what we'll have ready when school starts.
Well, Kelly, Kelly and finance and many other people in your administration work, uh, other miracles every day. So it will, I'm very certain she'll, they will all work a lot, uh.
Well, Chuck's been, Chuck's been working a bunch of miracles too, to make sure that we have it all there and that we have it in large supply. And again, we started buying that early, knowing that there would probably be some ways to fund that. So we're in pretty good shape.
Great, thank you. And just one last question, please. Um, for as long as any of us can remember, teachers have always wanted smaller class sizes. Um, the plan that I think I understood as it was presented, basically say that a third of the students or a certain number of the students will be physically with the, uh, teacher, um, once a day, I'm sorry, once a week, if I understand it, on a rotating kind of basis. So my question is, in effect, um, teachers will still have, I'm picking a number, 25 students that they are responsible for, but their day-to-day, uh, interaction, face-to-face, um, direct involvement and instruction will almost be, uh, uh, spread out between blocks of students and then online, um, tutorials as well. There'll be more concentrated attention by the teacher, um, for a lot of the students. I think, I understand, you help me understand.
Yeah, the idea was that, you know, in a first grade class that's eight, let's say it has 18 kids, that's just easy, that in an ideal world, there'd be six, six and six, right? On those three days, could be seven on one day and five on another because we will try to match up people when they can, but it's gonna be significantly small. And if I have six kids in a, in a small elementary class, or if I had 30 in a high school, then I'm gonna have 10. So somewhere between six and 10 kids, could be one or two more, depending on how that works, that there'd be enough room to spread them out in the classroom. And then ultimately, yeah, that was one of the reasons we didn't like the weekly rotation that we liked, that yes, a teacher will have pretty good opportunity for individual instruction once a week. Um, but as you said, don't forget that the teachers, and I'm sure Emily can speak to you here in just a minute, um, teaching the other 12 online on those days and, and having a bar that, that I think our teachers met for a large part of the time, which is to say they had something they need to do, is very difficult. So that was the other reason that we liked the Monday and Friday on the other side, was let's make sure that they have enough time to work individually, but also have enough time to, to do online instruction and some face-to-face in the same format that we're using now. Um, and we thought it was easy for parents to understand that, hey, I've got a Tuesday kid or a Wednesday kid or a Thursday kid, that's not gonna change. And so we felt like it was doable, it was communicatable, communicable, and that it was also teacher-friendly enough that they could pull it off. Still doesn't mean it's gonna be, it's gonna be very difficult because, um, to do remote instruction well, you know, what really it means is we're in remote instruction for five days a week with the added benefit of seeing the kid once a week, is really the way to think about it. And, um, and that's tough, it's very hard. And so again, I know you guys were gonna call on Emily, but, um, I'm not sure anybody appreciates how much it, it takes to have all that planned out and to make online instruction something that, that is legitimate for the, for the students, which again, I think our teachers did a great job of short notice. Now they've got some training behind them, I expect that to get even better, but it's hard, it's very hard. So, um, yes, there'll be some smaller classes for one-on-one, but there's a whole lot of difficult stuff going on while they're doing that, right? And it's probably is a good time for Emily to, um, come in, right?
Hey, guys, can I ask a question before we let Emily go? And I, I know we all want to hear from her as well, but I, I just got another question that kind of came out, Chris, when you were talking. So speaking of open house, this was one of my questions, I just didn't know where it was gonna come in at. I mean, kindergarteners start and have never walked a school, you know, as far as the layout of it, middle schoolers going in a new school for the first time, high schoolers going in for the, how do we handle that?
Yeah, I mean, in a weird way, I don't think it's that much different because like kindergarten orientation, for example, they have staggered entries. So they'll have, um, you know, four kids, five kids that come each day, Monday through Thursday, and then on Friday, they bring on Friday, they bring the whole class in together. And so to some degree, that'll look the same. They'll have four or five kids, you know, may take a couple, you know, they'll have four kids on Monday, four on Tuesday, or how many over the rotation is. Um, and the same thing with even sixth and ninth grade, like they know that there's a, if I'm a ninth grade teacher, I taught ninth grade at high school. If I'm a ninth grade teacher, part of my job is to, is orientation to school. So they may spend a little bit of time walking around the building and finding out the building through their classes, which is what the principal will work on. And all of them have already done it. Um, it'll obviously be a little bit different than kindergarten, but it's part of, when I'm a ninth grade teacher, it's part of what I sign up for. When I'm a 12th grade teacher, it's not what I sign up for. Right? It's not really part of that rotation. So the reality is principals in schools and teachers have already kind of figured that out and it'll be a little smaller in some cases, but it won't be that much different. It'll be part of how they acclimate them to, to the school.
So I guess we're addressing like tardiness, kids trying to figure out getting room to room, not getting into class on time. Would that whole piece of that is being discussed?
Yeah. I think that the answer to that is, um, you know, there, some of them will have staggered, um, release. So in other words, this part of the building will leave three minutes earlier than that one. But so much of that is dictated by the facility. So a really big, large facility would do it very different than a really small facility. Um, so the principals have to kind of say, hey, how are we going to maintain social distance? And it really varies from place to place. So they're all working on that and know that, but in one place, it could just be as simple as one minute difference. And in another, it might be a whole nother way that they separated people. But yes, again, in a, they have to figure that out bigger with 1,800 kids, but with 600 kids, you've still got to figure out how are we going to release? How are we going to feed people lunch? How are we going to do it? And it's really kind of the genius of what they do with the master schedule anyway.
Okay. Emily, do you want to squeeze you in there? And then Laura and I will ask our questions after, after that. Emily?
Sure. Um, when I'm thinking from a teacher perspective, I think that our number one priority is going to be the safety, obviously for our students and family, but also for our staff members, our teachers, our front office staff and our bus drivers. And then secondly, I would think that our relationships with our families and the social emotional health of our students and faculty are going to be top priorities. Um, so, you know, when I was listening and looking at the recommended Plan B that Dr. Hill and her team, um, put together, first of all, I put a lot of trust in Dr. Hill and, you know, that there's various stakeholders who have come together to kind of look at this plan and, you know, think about what, what kind of problems and things and will we have to troubleshoot. And, you know, when thinking about safety, you know, if Governor Cooper comes out and says, you know, we're able to, to put 50% capacity back into the schools and we do have the resources to make it safe. I think that for, you know, for students and for staff members who are willing to come back into the building and are not high risk, um, I think we should make it a priority to do that. And, um, I do support the recommended Plan B because I think that the relationships that you make in person, even if it's once a week, are going to be more beneficial than if we have to go remote. Um, saying that though, if Governor Cooper comes out and says, we're going a hundred percent remote, I know that our teachers in our county are going to be able to build those relationships as well. I would say, um, when you're considering kind of what, what decision to make with school, I think that faculty and thinking about supporting your teachers who, who have children and families, I think that that's a huge stressor for teachers right now who, um, were working remote in the fall and their children were in school. So they were trying to homeschool and then also, um, do their job and learning that remote, where, remote, um, role. I think it's important that we need to make sure that we're putting scaffolds in place to ensure that work-life, home-life balance, because I feel like our county really promotes being people and relationship first. And I think that our teachers really are the heartbeat of, um, what's going to happen in the fall when we want to make sure that we're supporting them, um, whether we're a hundred percent remote or if we're putting them in the classroom. And I just think we also need to think about a plan for, um, you know, faculty, faculty members who may be high risk. Um, I think that they have concerns about, you know, having to go back into the classroom and what's going to be put into place for their safety. Um, touching on what Dr. Lauter said, um, I do think that there are benefits of the reduction in student size. Um, but if we are going to be doing live teaching in the classroom and then synchronous and then asynchronous learning, I do think that teachers will feel that they're taking on probably the same amount of work, if not more. And they really are going to need the support and flexibility in, um, the master schedule to make sure we're protecting that instructional planning time, um, and making sure we're providing that professional development needed for those teachers who might not feel comfortable with remote learning. Um, but I'm really thankful for just everything that I've heard tonight, and I think that we're headed in a great direction.
Thank you, Emily. Laura?
Well, hey, okay. So, um, first thing I want to talk about is masks. David brought up a very good point. Um, I think everyone knows that I'm in the healthcare industry and I'm literally there every single day with a mask on, with goggles on. Um, my concern though is, Dr. Lauter, I know that you said that your supply is good. Our supply is not good at the doctor's office. We're only allowed to get three antibacterial wipes a week, like the, the big canisters of those. And our masks have been depleted to the point where we didn't hardly have any to, like, we can't give any extra out to any patients of ours that don't have masks if they come up, but they can't come in if they don't have a mask on. So I'm just, I guess I'm just a little bit hesitant to think that the school system is going to have more PPE than the healthcare industry because everything is on shortage right now.
Yeah. I don't disagree with what you're saying. I guess what, you know, our, the, the standard that we have been told is fine for school is a face covering, right? So it's not necessarily the standard of what you guys are, um, are going to be using as far as, like you're saying, mask and what you're covered with, because the intent is very different. Yours is to protect you from people who are coming into the office who are infected, and ours is to hopefully not spread from one person to another when they don't already know that they have COVID-19. So, yeah, I'm not, I'm not saying by any stretch that we can get all of the medical coverage. I'm just saying that right now we feel like with, in other words, if, um, if the state, and this is one of the things that, you know, they've talked about, that the state may provide five masks, which would be similar to the one that, you know, I wear when I go to the grocery store. Well, it's not, it's just something that somebody made that covers up, that they give them five and they can wash them on the weekends. That's probably going to meet our standard and what's going to be used at school, but it's not, it's not going to be what would be the standard at your medical office. So, um, I guess that's, that's how I would answer that. But I don't disagree with you or think that, you know, can there be a time where we would get in and we may not have those, um, you know, we may not have that much, um, and that we had a problem getting that material. Sure, it could be there, but right now I think, especially over the last six weeks or so, um, Chuck has felt pretty good about where we're at and what we can have for the buses and what we could have available at school. Again, but I, it's a different standard than what you're talking about.
Sorry, I can't, this mute thing is messing me up. Okay. So, um, so students would be able to come in and wear just cloth mask or whatever covering they had. And then teachers would then also be required to just only have their cloth or whatever coverings they may have. It's not going to be a certain standard for teachers, PPE, such as goggles, because now they're saying that it could be potentially airborne. So if, if, if you come in contact with it and you don't have goggles on, then you're not protecting your eyes.
Yeah. So no, I mean, my understanding from anything I've seen so far is no, we would not have that level. It would just be a face covering, like you said, that would go over, there would be a cloth covering that would go over. So are goggles going to be provided for every teacher? No, that's not, that's not my understanding of any, any of the planned stuff that I've seen. Um, and, and again, that it, there wouldn't be gowns that people would wear, gloves, I don't think are recommended whenever you're teaching a class, although there could be a situation where any of those may be possible, depending on the student or the, um, the teachers that are in the building. But as far as what the recommendations are from, from what I've seen from the CDC and from the state document would not be to the level of what you're talking about.
Okay. Um, and also I think my other, um, question or comment too is, um, you know, both of these options basically at this point, and of course, we don't know what Governor Cooper is going to say, um, but they're basically virtual options. I mean, and I think Chris or Dr. Lauter, sorry, you kind of alluded to that, that both of these are, are virtual options. Um, you know, as a parent, and, and I'm just speaking about myself and the other parents that I know that have this big concern is what are we going to do with our kids during the day who have no place to go, but I have to go to work? I can't take my kids to work. Um, it's just not an option for me, but I have to work. So I have a feeling that we're going to have a situation of where we've got kids left at home alone that are probably too young to be home alone because their parents have to work. Um, I, I don't know. Teachers with kids, you know, I, I worry about how, how are they going to possibly be able to do this while they're trying to teach and have their kids at home? And I know that they've done it and you, and we can, you know, we all know that we can do something for a little bit of time, but you know, we're getting to the point now where it's extended that little bit of time and parents have used up all their leave from work, um, and, and don't have anymore and don't have any more options. So I think that these are all things that we need to really, really consider. And I know it's not really going to be essentially up to us. I mean, I know that Governor Cooper is going to be the one who, who kind of really tells us what we're going to have to do, and then we're just going to have to try to work around it. But, um, you know, it just, it's, it's unnerving to me on both sides that number one, we are not going to require or have the amount of PPE that they're really needing. So let me just say this, and Dr. Lauter, I know that you said that it's because we're protecting ourselves from other people who have this virus. We do not see any patients at Harrisburg family that have the virus. So we're not protecting ourselves from current active cases. We're testing everybody before they come in, taking temperatures, um, so that we don't even allow anyone in that has the virus. Hopefully that's the goal. Um, but we still wear goggles and masks. So on that perspective, it's hard for me to see how, if we're not going to even provide that level of PPE, how we could keep our teachers safe. But on the other flip side of that, it's about how are we going to be able to make sure that these kids have proper, you know, and I know that we can't control everything, but parents have to work. That's the bottom line. They have to work. So if they have the option to stay at home, my guess is they probably have already decided that they're going to put their kids in virtually or homeschool them, because that's always been an option. Um, the kids that go to our schools are the ones that need to be there because their parents don't have the luxury of homeschooling them or having them be at home alone to do virtually. So those are just my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Got a couple of them, uh, questions that we've got by email. How do we keep students socially distanced in the hallways? Do we have a plan for that?
Yeah. As I said, I think that ultimately is a facility issue, you know, depends on how compact classes are. Like I said, a big, huge school, that may be easier to do than a smaller school. So yes, principals are aware of that, working on that, you know, class changes, transitions, um, you know, how, how do you bring people in? So much of that depends on the, the layout of the facility and principals know that better than anybody. So they have a plan for how you're going to bring people in, how you're going to check temperature, and then, you know, how are you going to change classes or, or transition to another class, depending on the level in the class.
The other one here was in the event that a student has or is reported with the virus, is the whole school quarantined or is it just classes, the teachers? Or do we have a plan for that?
Yeah. So ultimately the plan is to follow what the, the Health Alliance tells us to do. And so at the end of the day, what I anticipate, and I, I could be wrong, just that this, what I, if we come back in Plan B, let's say, um, I anticipate that there may be times that the Health Alliance will tell us that everybody in Ms. Wagner's class is quarantined, right? There's a kid there. So kids are all there and teacher and stu, and kids and teacher assistant, anybody that's in that class, they're all quarantined for 14 days and Ms. Wagner teaches them remotely, right? But they may not, they may not, um, require that for anybody else in the school. Again, depending on the circumstance and the layout. Um, it's also possible, I think, much like we had one in the spring where we have two or three cases or whatever at a school and the Health Alliance says, you know what? Our Brown McAllister is quarantined for the, for the next two weeks and that school is closed. Meanwhile, teachers are going to continue doing remote. And it may be possible that Cabarrus County Schools is under quarantine for the next 14 days, but Kannaple City Schools, which is in the same county, may not be. So I would think, and again, this is all a guess, but in our best case scenario, if we're coming back to school and we have a year where nobody really gets seriously sick and we don't have a problem, we will still have what I just described. Classrooms, buildings, and maybe even our whole system at times shut down, um, for the safety depending on that spread. So, I mean, I hate to say the answer is going to be based on the situation, but it is. And we always talk to the Health Alliance and get their guidance and then are obviously overly cautious with that on what the safest thing to do is, again, we've been tremendously lucky that we live in Cabarrus County that has the Cabarrus Health Alliance because they are one phone call away and, and don't hesitate to give us a recommendation.
Thank you. Uh, we also, a couple of emails about folks, teachers or, or parents concerned about having to sign waivers. Is there a plan for that?
Yeah. I got a lot of waiver questions today, and I think there may be, um, something in the state document about waivers. We do not have local waivers in Cabarrus County. So, um, I'm not really sure what required. That's one thing we're going to be looking a little more, because I've probably got five or six emails today that mentioned waivers. Um, and so it's part of the state document. It may also be part of the transportation part of it. It's not something we require. So to be honest with you, we'll pull that information more and look a little bit to see if that's something that Governor Cooper discusses, because there seem to be a lot of anxiety around waivers. And right now, that's not really something that I thought was going to be part of our continuous routine. So to be continued, I think on that and see if it's mentioned this week.
Okay. Thank you. And then my two questions are, um, how are we, are we working with other school systems to see what their, what their plans are, especially similar school systems? Do we have a group that communicates?
Yeah. So we have two that I communicate with, um, either once a week or twice a week. One is the 12 largest districts where the, we're one of them. So I have a weekly phone call with them, finding out what all of those are doing. And the other one is the, um, the Southwest Education Alliance, which is essentially the 11 or 12 districts in our area, our region that we're set up with. Uh, we meet with them once a month, but we also are on a pretty regular call with them. The other one is, um, I'm one of the regional representatives. So there are eight regions in the state. There are two reps from each region all across the state. So that's a weekly phone call too. So it's really three groups that we have at least, um, weekly contact with to find out, how are you handling this? You know, what is it that we can steal from you or what is it that we don't really like and can tweak? Um, constantly talking with each other. That's why if you look, most of the large districts, for example, are, um, do not have athletics going on right now. That's something that as a group, everybody talks about. Doesn't mean every single one is going to follow lockstep, but we talk quite a bit. Um, and obviously the ones, I'm most interested in ones that are similar to us, like Johnston County, Gaston County, Durham, they're very close to our size, um, but a CMS and a Wake are five times bigger than us. So while they actually come up with lots of great ideas that we listen to all the time, we're always trying to compare the difference in a, in a 34,000 student district and 154,000 student district.
So how's our plan to compare from what you know?
It depends. Like I said, there are, there are some of those that we look at. For example, um, CMS has put out that they're going to go on the weekly rotation that Dr. Hill mentioned before, that was A, A students are there for a week, B students are there the next week, C, the following week. Um, and I understand lots of that. We, we looked at that quite a bit, but we just ultimately didn't like, um, the teacher burden, to be honest with you, to say like, if, so if I have students every single day of the week and I have two weeks of remote, how am I going to teach all of them? Um, so while again, I'm not saying anything negative about CMS, we share ideas all the time. It was a, an idea that we looked at that we didn't get sold on. And again, when we're meeting with our stakeholder groups, it wasn't our first choice, but it doesn't mean that we, we communicate with them about transportation. We may take parts of what they're doing and they take parts of what we're doing. So, um, we really like our plan. And I know a couple of districts around us have looked at ours and have, you know, said, hey, my teachers really like your plan too, but where they land, I, I don't know all of them yet. Um, I know Union County, for example, they have a board meeting tomorrow night. So he said they were going to make some final decisions and put theirs out tomorrow.
Thanks. And my last question, more has to do with the high school. We've already put out the schedules for the students for next year, right?
Yes.
But if we, if we implement, uh, you know, this option B and have an A, A, B, C day, what about the kids that would normally have a class that meets every other day? So they'd only see the teacher once a month or twice a month?
Yeah. Great question. So, um, just again, say kudos to Dr. Hill and Ms. Reeves and Dr. Roth and Mr. Allred. They, they really were, um, the worker bees on these schedules and really got feedback all the way along. They did a tremendous job. High school schedule's the toughest one to figure out. Um, that was one of the reasons we landed on the three days, but feel like it's a good place to land. Um, but there are, uh, school classes in high school that meet, as you say, every other day. Um, and what their plan is that, again, each individual school will run their schedule, but the plan that they have put forward would be on those days, they would meet for 45 minutes with each one of those classes instead of missing them for two weeks. So they, they already do that sometimes, but they would combine those on that day and go 45 minutes in English two and 45 minutes in, um, AP, um, history to, to try to meet that. And they- And they felt pretty good about that. So I, every school makes up their own schedule, but it sounded like that's how they were gonna handle all of them.
Students couldn't keep their schedule. They're not gonna, you know, take a class away from them.
Yeah, it was another reason that we liked the third, third, a third. I mean, obviously transportation mandates that, but at high school, if I took all the kids in my first period and divided them into thirds, well, then my second period is made up of totally different students, right? It doesn't work the same way. So where we kind of landed was if they come Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, they can teach 10 kids, 10 kids, 10 kids, and then run the schedule and not have to tear the whole schedule down and build it back up again. And so not perfect, but the best place that we landed. And again, give a lot of credit to Mr. Allred and Dr. Hill and our high school principals for coming up with a plan that worked.
Okay, other, other question, Barry, you get your hand raised?
And I do have another one too, guys, I'm sorry.
All right.
Dr. Lauter, um, obviously we'll have a number of children that are gonna be falling through the cracks. Laura, Laura alluded to it. And, um, I'm, I'm a little concerned about John Bassalisa's charter with the McKinney Vento and, and, and just with the counselors, with Amy, what she has to deal with counselors and, uh, social workers. Do you think that there could be funding available that would allow us to hire on a temporary basis for a year or maybe a two, two years to hire extra social workers slash counselors? Or even psychiatrists or psychologists to help with the, the gap that's getting ready to happen with the kids that are gonna fall through the cracks? Um, if this goes on for a long period, there will be a larger group that probably will be unattended. Um, we talk about the latchkey kids or what, what Laura was referred to, but there's also just those kids that really need a little extra something. And they won't be, they won't have the face-to-face time for people to really see what's going on in their lives. So your thoughts and have you, have y'all thought about this or have you all had conversation about this?
Yeah, so I think that's one of everyone's biggest concerns. Um, the, as far as extra funding to answer, um, Kelly, I, I know there's, there's little pieces of that. And our, actually, um, Ms. Lauter and Ms. Jewel and Mr. Bassley have done a great job applying for a grant. We actually have gotten quite a few of those positions over the last couple of years. But Kelly, do you wanna speak to positions and then I can come back and answer the rest?
Sorry, yes, I do. Um, so as a part of the CARES Act funding, um, there is, um, an allotment that DPI is working to allocate right now. And if it's to be allocated in the same manner as our normal, um, positions in OO7, which is the PRC that we pay our guidance and social work out of. So if I'm estimating correctly, the amount is probably gonna be around $200,000 that we will have for that type of thing that can only be used for those services, primarily for contract services through December 31st. So not a, I'm sorry. So not a permanent position, but we can do a lot of contracting between now and, in December 31st.
And I think the second part of that question is everybody is aware of the need that you, that you and Ms. Blackwell both spoke of, of just, you know, touching base with kids and figuring that out. So we know that that's gotta be initially where we start in a lot of places. So they're working on now some scheduling. So if I'm a teacher and I only have one day face-to-face, then when are other times? Like counselors, social workers, um, psychologists are always trying to find time for, um, to have contact anyway. So maybe on the Monday and Friday, when there's less face-to-face time, that would be time that they can work that in some remote and some face-to-face, which is what Crystal mentioned earlier about the possibility of maybe Fridays. We're not gonna be able to start that way. But once we know exactly how many people need and want transportation, we may be able to do it. But I assure you that John and Amy and Amy are, um, this is kind of the bell that they're ringing all the time is, hey, this need is, is pretty desperate and we've gotta start here while we know we have to, to teach kids. So I feel like, um, no, there probably won't be enough time for it and there won't be enough money for it. But everybody understands the need. It's one of the reasons that there's, I think, a push to get people back to school, right?
Okay, Holly, then David?
Okay, and actually I have two and they're totally unrelated, but. So Kelly, this is probably a question for you. I think one of the situations that Carolyn was alluding to earlier regarding, she called it penalties. And I'm, I'm not sure Carolyn, if that's what you heard or if that's the word that's been used. But there was some discussion on Spectrum and I didn't catch all of it, but they were doing an update about what happens when reopening takes place. And I'm not sure where it was coming down from, but they were discussing that if we go into a all-remote learning situation, that funding could be pulled or, um, I, I'm not sure what all the verbiage was. But they were discussing that if we become a remote learning-only school system, that possible funding problems could take place with allocations and that type of thing. And I don't, I don't know exactly what all they were discussing. But Kelly, have you heard any of that? Is there any in that, any updates on any type of funding changes if we become an all-remote learning process?
No, um, there's nothing official on that. I, like you, I've heard things in the media and that type thing, but there's been absolutely no official communication on anything like that.
Okay, great. And then the other thing, so I know, uh, Chris, you just made a comment about the schools will take care of their own individual schedules and I get that. But what will we do if, I mean, I'm sure it's gonna be made very clear when we open and when the kids are there that all the guidelines will have to be followed. So what's gonna take place if kids show up without mask? Or there's a problem that they don't have them? Or, you know, they're on school campus now and we've got a problem that they're there and they're not meeting the guidelines? How's that gonna be handled?
Yeah, so, um, right now, I think Chuck says we have about 60,000 face coverings on hand to, to start out. But the reality is, is, you know, schools deal every day with people that don't follow the rules, right? And so a kindergarten that doesn't follow the rule, um, there's a consequence. And there's a consequence for a high school that doesn't follow the rules. But if the rule is you have to have a face covering to be at school and people don't comply with that, then they're not gonna be able to come to school. Um, it's pretty much that simple, I think. Now, doesn't mean that there won't be a time that they're not there, but just like somebody that doesn't comply with what we ask them to do, um, if face coverings is part of having, coming to school to protect them and to protect our teachers, then they're gonna have to wear them. And if they don't, they're not gonna be allowed to come to school. Um, I certainly think that we'll have mostly compliance in those areas. But again, if I'm teaching kindergarten, I may have to have mask breaks and we may have to go outside. And we may handle that very differently from what we expect an 18-year-old to be able to do with a mask and not pass it on. So again, schools already kind of are masters of figuring out routines and what happens. And when people don't comply, then there's gotta be an appropriate consequence for that. And right now, I don't see any way that we can come back to school unless people wear face coverings, um, K-12, unless there's a, a medical reason or a disability that would, you know, and there are provisions in the law and everything around it for them not to have it. So.
So I'm really gonna throw it out here and I think it's time we do, cause I'm, I'm getting a lot of questions about this and this is probably gonna be very controversial. But, so we do have the exceptions medically, what, what, just whatever that is for not having to wear a face mask. So therefore, you know, you're kind of opening things up to them not wearing face, face masks when everybody else thinks it's most important, you know, to make sure that we're abiding by these guidelines. So then you've got the parents that don't believe that their kids should have to and they're not going to possibly adhere to the rules. How do we handle all that? It's a big difference if the kid's acting out and you send them down to the principal's office or they're put in, I, you know, whatever for some type of reprimand versus they're supposed to have a face mask on and can't enter the building.
Yeah, again, I mean, I think it's, you can't come in the building if you don't have a face mask on. And so will there be a place where we get parents to come pick their students back up? Yes, we have that on, you know, sometimes it's dress code. Again, depends on the kid's age level. Um, but I don't see any way around that from anything that I've said. And again, maybe the governor's gonna give us different guidance. But if you're gonna come to school, you're gonna have to wear a face covering and that's for the protection of students and for our faculty. And so when you have a disability even, which obviously there are provisions in the law for, so if I have medical documentation or disability, then you may say, well, that student can't wear one. But even in that situation, now let's say we were gonna have six students in a classroom with disabilities that, you know, again, could wear a face mask. Well, then they may not be able to have six students in a classroom if they're not gonna have that. Because again, you have to protect faculty too. So each classroom you're gonna have to look at, if there's a reason, you have a legitimate reason to not do it, then we may have to change the, um, you know, how many kids can be in that class depending on the situation. So again, we have to make sure that we protect students and, and our faculty and anybody that comes in contact with them. And today, unless something changes, that means they're gonna have to wear a face cover or they're not gonna be able to come to school. And if they don't have one on or refuse, then we're gonna, you know, separate them and have mom and dad come pick them up, which is something that happens every day at our schools anyway.
Okay, thanks.
David?
Um, Dr. Lauter, I think we all got the email today and it was from, um, one of the school custodians. And I won't call out the person's name, that wouldn't be fair, but it, but it was a very smart, reasonable, measured, informed, um, articulate, uh, email from a custodian at one of the schools. I mean, hallelujah. That, uh, in my short little seven and a half years, I'm not sure if I've ever gotten a staff email from, from a custodian. But I, I feel like that person was talking for every other custodian in, in all the schools and all of our facility buildings. Um, and maybe for the last 10 or 15 years of custodians that we've ever had. But what I'm getting at is that you've got a whole lot of frontline people who make the whole system work. And I'm not saying this to be tried or even to pander. I'm trying to say that managers at every level of every facility, um, should really go out of their way to encourage and empower the custodians, the, uh, school nutrition people, the, uh, bus drivers to innovate, to come up with ideas and to get barriers out of people's way. I know there's a process and a hierarchy of just say a purchase order or something. But if, if those individuals who really are the, the real backbone and the unsung heroes of the whole system are coming up with suggestions and ideas, I hope every one of our managers and your, uh, direct reports will go out of their way to make sure that, that we expedite at least the review and, and the fulfillment of what, um, you know, those, uh, those real essential workers are doing that make the system, the school system work every day.
Yeah, so obviously that's what we hope we do. I would say that you always start with the principal, right? So, um, because again, it's usually gonna be a, a facility part of that. Along the lines of custodians too, just cause you guys asked about PPE. Obviously custodians may have a different level of PPE than a teacher who's teaching first grade. So some of that again will be exposure, uh, position, how that may work. But yeah, as a general rule, that's what you want. People that are working in the, the positions that you just listed were people that were working on the front lines from March 15th all through and are, and are still working now with our buildings, with still feeding students, transporting food to students. You know, these guys are frontline workers that are, you know, been working on this all along and doing a great job. And we're certainly thankful that they're doing it.
Thank you. Further other questions on the reentry plan? We did have one other thing I wanna talk about on, on the COVID-19 update is, uh, you know, we've been in the phase two reopening. So we've kept, we've kept our meetings remote, uh, and virtual. We may end up in phase three next week, we may not. We do have a groundbreaking that's scheduled for next week for our new middle school. Um, and I guess currently we'd be limited to 25 people outdoors. Is that, there is understanding, I don't know if we go to phase three, that changes. Uh, do we still wanna hold the groundbreaking? Um, and then what do we wanna do for our August meeting?
Mr. Chairman, regarding the groundbreaking, um, that is really a social opportunity. I don't think that is necessary at this point. I think if things settle down, we can schedule a ceremonial activity at the middle, the new middle school site. But I think at this point, it's inappropriate.
Awesome. It's also hot as blue blazes, so I agree with, with, with Ms. Furtinbaugh.
We, we have two, two to postpone and anybody else?
Well, I'm not here, so I won't, it won't be affecting me.
Rest, any thoughts from your perspective?
Uh, I would, you know, my recommendation would be what we've tried to do, whether it's athletics or here, is to follow the governor's phases. So I think you make the decision after he, um, does change the phase. So, you know, hopefully we're gonna do that before the end of the week. But you know, at the end of the day, this is more of a board issue than it is a staff issue. So we'll follow whatever you guys wanna do. But we have tried to line up with the governor when, you know, he, he's saying, here's the groupings, phase one, phase two, phase three, so when.
So folks have already prepared for this? Has already expenses been made or can we wait?
No, I think, um, you know, Mindy and Sarah usually kind of work with sending that out and letting people know. And I think they were purposely waiting for tonight to see what you guys said. So as far as I know, there's no real expense that we put into it so far.
Well, I'd be okay with postponing this to another time till we're more comfortable and to phase three. Is thoughts, Barry, Barry, wanna weigh in on it?
I'm fine with whatever, every, the general group, you know, if we don't need to have it right now. I mean, it's, it's hot outside and you can always throw dirt.
Okay. So I guess it was throwing it before it got started, but that's, uh, it'll be postponed. We'll make it, we'll come up with a date in the, in the future and let you, let y'all know. Anything else on our COVID updates before we go into the academic calendar?
Hey, guys, before we go on, I, I had something else and I couldn't get this thing off mute quick enough and I apologize. So Dr. Lauter, the one thing I wanted to make sure, and I have had so many notes I was trying to go through. We've discussed, I, I just see chaos and mayhem taking place. And I'm sure y'all have got it under control and it'll be just walking it through each day as it starts anyway. But I feel like it's gonna be real important that, no matter where you stand on this issue, and I probably differ with a lot of you on this because of what I do for a living. But to me, it's got to be made extremely clear to parents and in however many means of getting it out there, that whatever these requirements and guidelines are to enter school is made very, very clear that there's no question, so that there's not chaos going on at the school level once they get there and there's a constant backup of kids not being able to do what they're supposed to have done and parents not agreeing with it and just deciding that, you know, whatever that's gonna look like. I just see so much chaos going on with that because of how people stand on the issue anyway. And no matter where you are, be it right, be it wrong, it's gonna cause a lot of, you know, like I said, chaos once they get to school if they're in non-compliance. So I'm, I'm a hear, I'm hearing you say that everybody is gonna be fully prepared for that.
This comes from the state though, doesn't it?
Well, um, yeah, I mean, but whatever we're, we're putting out there as the school system of what's gonna be important to enter the school building, whatever that is, whatever those restrictions and guidelines are, that we make it very clear and we get it out there to the masses is, you know, this is what's gonna take place, this is what's gonna have to happen. And if it's not, then your child's not gonna be able to enter the building. You know, there's just so much stuff out there and people, it is a very divided issue and I can see it just causing a lot of chaos. And it's already gonna be cumbersome for them anyway. I just wanna make sure that we do a really good job of that there is no question at any school, at any level on what those guidelines will be that they enter that building.
Well, you know, I mean, it's just like anything else. We have 34,000 students and that means we have, you know, 60-some thousand parents that are all there and 5,000 employees. So when you communicate with 105,000 people, is there gonna be somebody that shows up on the first day and says, I didn't know that? Well, that happens every day at every school. Um, so we're gonna do everything we can to communicate that, um, around the clock. But again, there're gonna be people that, um, you know, just for example, that dropped their child off and don't know their child has a fever and then the kid's gonna have a fever when we scan them. And then we're gonna have to call mom and mom's gonna have to come back. But mom may live 30 minutes away and she didn't get the call till 30 minutes after she dropped the kid off. And so there's a 90-minute turnaround that, schools deal with that every day. And if that's not what we want to deal with, but the reality is that's what's gonna happen if they're at school. And that's gonna be face coverings, it's gonna be temperatures. Um, but again, I just don't see that there's any other way that you can, if we're gonna have face-to-face instruction, it's gonna have to be, um, under pretty, um, you know, got, strict guidelines that say, here's how this has to look every day or there won't be face-to-face instruction.
Right, no, I mean, I get it. There, there is always the exception and there's always gonna be people that forget or there's, it's not gonna hap-. And I get it, that, that always is. I just wanna make sure we're doing our part, you know, to do it as best we can to get it all out there so that people are very clear.
Well, I've just been texted that, um, the media, some, looks like some Raleigh media is saying that the governor's gonna make an announcement tomorrow. So for what it's worth, it will, that will actually help that we went over this tonight and evidently the governor's gonna speak about school tomorrow is the thing that I've been texted. So as soon as that comes out, there's no reason to do it in front of that. As soon as that comes out, then we'll start saying, here's our communication for what we're gonna look like. Now again, back to Ms. Carpenter's point, it doesn't mean that the school system and/or the school board couldn't say, well, we don't feel good about Cabarrus County. The governor said B, but we're gonna do all remote and put people in C. That is still an option, but I don't think the one that ever. That is still an option, but I don't think the one that everybody's going to go to first. I think you would, you know, get closer to that depending on the decision that he makes.
I think that would be great. I think it would be great if he would put something out there tomorrow. These parents need to know what's going on, they need to make preparations. You know, it's just, we really do need to get something out there to them so they can start preparing and make plans. I hate it that it's so close now, and much less if it were even another week or so out. So I appreciate those comments.
But based on the emails I've gotten, and I'm sure the ones y'all got, if it's all students are in the building, there's a significant portion of people that are upset. If it's no schools and kids in the building, there's a significant portion, and if it's B in some part of that plan, there's a significant portion. So I feel like at least 25 or 30% of our community is going to be upset whichever way we go, and so you have to have the best and the safest plan to move forward, which I feel like we have a pretty good plan, but I'm sure it's not perfect.
Absolutely, and my thought is, we are never going to make everybody happy no matter what when we're doing anything different, and this one is about as different as it gets.
Okay, everybody have their questions? Questions?
One question. All right, if the governor comes out and we just talked, are we going to come back and do a formal vote to say, yeah, we agree, or we don't? Are we just going to say, we're going to accept what he does?
So I think that's a board decision. What we're going to do is put out, here's what we will do in Plan A, which again is pretty much kids going to school, and Plan C. The real issue to put out is, here's what our Plan B is going to look like. So if it's A, B, or C, depending on what the governor says, then that's where we would go. If the board says, well, I don't want us to go to B, I would like for us to go to C, then that may be something we could talk about, because we have not discussed whether the board wants to quote approve that or not, but it certainly is something that you guys could do if that's what you're interested in doing.
If anyone's not happy with that, let's speak up now, but I think whatever the government's going to go with, all the other school systems are pretty much going to have to comply with that. So is anyone completely objective to having any in school?
Mr. Chairman, I think if the, you know, the governor may not say a straight A, B, or C. He may say, C for the first quarter, something of that nature. But even if it's B, someone mentioned this earlier, based on our county's numbers, is the Health Alliance okay with us doing RB, or do they think based on our numbers, we should stay in C for a month or two? I mean, I think there's still a little bit of a discussion there.
Chris, do we have an indication that the Health Department is concerned about us opening schools?
Oh, yeah, I think any health professional, if you talk to them, is worried about schools and depends on the area. Now, again, ours has been great. I think if we ask them, hey, what do you think about opening schools? That doesn't mean they're going to say, no, do not open schools, but are they concerned that opening school prevents more spread? I think the answer to that is yes. So, you know, we'll be consulting with them throughout, and even if we come out in B, and let's say, I'm just making something up, the cases in Cabarrus County quadruple over the next two weeks, and we look something like Florida, I imagine the Health Alliance would say, hey, let's not open up, and my inclination would be to say, I agree, let's not. But if it goes the opposite way, and we have a quarter less than we have today, then, you know, it may be the opposite way to go. But we can go in between plans at any time. So we could start, as Ms. Furtinbaugh said, we could start on B, and three weeks in, the governor could say, you know what, there's too much spread, the schools are all going to C. Or he could put us in B, and our county could decide, we could decide, I could decide, however we decide to do that, that, hey, it's too big of a risk because of the cases, we're going to start in C. Those are all options that are provided.
So as of today, are we concerned about implementing Plan B?
Are we concerned? Yes. I mean, at the end of the day, as Ms. Carpenter said, the cases in Cabarrus County are not going in the right direction. That doesn't mean that we would be deemed a hotspot or had enough things to, you know, for that to break out, but it could mean that that's why you would want to avoid that. So, you know, we'll be in constant communication with the Health Alliance, and, you know, we get, I'm on a call twice a week where we get updates on the numbers, but certainly the past two or three weeks in Cabarrus County are not good numbers. And so do masks and some of the stuff that's been implemented over the last two weeks make a difference, and those start to decline? Or does that ramp up significantly? And if it does, then at any point, we may say, you know what, we've got to start remote because the risks are too high.
Okay, we've given you that authority, right?
Yeah, I think the question maybe for Ms. Carpenter and I have for you guys is, is that, you know, is the board going to be involved? Meaning like, is it, hey, we want to vote on this in August? I think timing sometimes is difficult, but, you know, because you don't want it to be like, oh, well, we can't change or pivot because we have to go to the board. But ultimately, if you say, we want this to be a board decision, that's different than if you say, hey, consult with the Health Alliance and decide what you think's the right thing to do.
Well, I stated, I have a concern, so I'm just giving y'all's my two cents worth. And so I'm only one member, but I do have that concern.
All right, Holly and Laura?
So Carolyn, what was your concern? I think I missed some of that.
Where, because our numbers are so high, and they haven't been going down, you know, that, you know, whether to start off virtual, you know, if he comes back and says, hey, go B, you know, but our numbers have still been going up high, where we may be wanting to start off virtual, then go B. Us to have that option, maybe stay virtual to maybe October, you know, or something like that, then go B. But us to have that option because our numbers have still been high, to make sure we are under control. But, you know, to check with, as Dr. Louder has mentioned numerous times, we've worked very closely with the Health Alliance to, you know, check to see what they think. And the safety of our children, of our staff, that has to be a very, very high priority for us, and all the emails that we have gotten have been from our teachers. That's been one of their big concerns, and, you know, we have to keep that in mind. And that's what's, you know, a very big concern for me.
But the CDC says if you follow these guidelines, it should be safe to open schools.
So, can I add something to that just real quick? I'm sorry. I have been, you know, there has been a potential that I have been exposed to COVID multiple times, and I have not contracted this disease or this sickness. So my point to that is this, if the precautions are used and the correct PPE is used, we could probably go to school, option A, and not have, I know daycares that have been open this entire time and have not had one single outbreak. So that potential is always there too.
Barry?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Were you talking to me?
Did you get a chance to provide your input?
No, I was waiting. Look, the governor's going to make a decision sometime this week. We're going to go along and we're going to wait for the 17th of August, at which time, before that date, Chris will have a much clearer understanding of where he is in the process. He'll come to us and let us know, he says, this is what I'm thinking based on the guidance from the Health Alliance, and so he'll say, I feel like the best direction for this, this is what I would recommend, and the best direction is to go this direction, and this board will have to decide if that's what it wants to do. But we gave him the COVID powers to make these decisions. They're going to be fluid, they're going to change from day to day, we're not going to be able to meet every time we need to change direction. That's why we asked Chris to take this role on. We pay him the money to do this work, and he's doing it well, he's got a team that's doing it well, he's lined up a wonderful plan for us, we need to be, trust the process that we have set. We set this process in motion, and Chris has been executing and helping us, educate us all along the way. I think this is a smart thing to do. He's staying in touch with the right people, he's not thumbing his nose at the authorities that are around him, he's listening to good sound counsel, and we need to go with him and listen to that as well. And if he comes to us and says, the sound counsel that I get from the Health Alliance here in Cabarrus County is that we go to Level C, I guess that's the most restrictive?
Yeah.
Right. Or if they say, go to Level B, and he and his team agree with that, and he can provide the type of protections he needs for the teachers, then we should go that direction. My biggest concern, and I've stated all along, is making sure that our staff is as well protected as they can possibly be through this thing. Chris knows that. Chuck knows that his team needs to be on the premises every single day, cleaning all those dabs and making sure the surfaces are clean, and they're going to have the people in there to make sure that that happens. So the custodial staff is going to be, they're going to be like our number one defense. And I'm concerned about our custodial staff getting their kind of PPE. So we need to trust the process that we have set in motion. We've got a very, very good team that's handling this, and I think we need to trust them. Thank you.
David, did you have anything else you wanted to say?
I'll keep it brief. Absolutely, without reservation, have confidence in Dr. Louder and his staff. I could flourish a bit more than that, but that's exactly literally what I mean. I do hope that Dr. Louder and his staff can keep us, the board, informed as quickly as possible with, you know, information that we need to know so that we can continue to support this staff. So much of what's going on is that 60,000 parents and 5,000 employees and seven board members are all trying to impose order over something that we don't, can't predict yet, don't know day to day what we're trying to do. Completely agree with Barry and several, hopefully all of us, that we need to give Dr. Louder and his staff the absolute confidence to make those day-to-day decisions, especially when they, when none of us can predict what those circumstances or the decisions might be day to day. I trust their experience and their insights to do exactly that, but I do hope that they'll keep us well and promptly informed as board members, so we can continue doing that, exercising oversight of the school system, which is our job. Thanks.
Okay, and my perspective is, again, our families and staff want to know what we're going to do, so the longer we delay things is, I think, is not the best interest. So as soon as we can come up with a decision, let's inform our families, same thing as with our next item with the academic calendar. They're still waiting for us officially to say what direction we're going. So can we move on to our next item, which is?
I need to make a statement because I waited for everybody else to do that. I guess after that, the only thing I would say is, you know, we don't know what the governor is going to say tomorrow, but I think I would like to know, Chris, if you, I mean, I don't know what that's going to be, and none of us do, but if it's some variable from what we've been told about A, B, and C, or one or the other that we've had a little bit of discussion about, that maybe we're not all quite in agreement, I would like to know as soon as possible what your plan is to get out there, just because it is important, and, you know, I'm not going to argue with anybody about what needs to happen or how it needs to go, but we, our ultimate goal should be to get this information out to parents so they can make preparations and plans. You know, we know when he makes his decision, which way we would go tomorrow. You know you will. We've had too much discussion, there's too much here. So, Chris, I'm sure without a doubt, as soon as you hear it, you're going to understand and know which way you're going to tell us that you think needs to happen in Cabarrus County schools. We need to get that out there, and it's got to be before, Barry, I don't know if I heard you right, I thought you said we have until August the 17th, but I'm thinking we have got to get parents some type of time period to get prepared to implement their own personal plans, because they're all different with their own households. I think the sooner we get that out there, and if he makes his announcement tomorrow, Chris, you're going to know what you need to do after that.
Right, so, you know, A and C are pretty self-explanatory. If he puts us in one of those, you do it. B is the one that's the one that's logistically, you know, very difficult for the schools and for parents. So whichever one he places us in tomorrow, I think we move towards. So let's say he puts us in B tomorrow, then we're going to advertise what our Plan B looks like, and that's what we're going to move towards. But if, again, two weeks from now, it's August 3rd, which just happens to be a board meeting, and all the cases have gone out of control, then at that point, we might say, you know what, we're going to move back to C, because we've talked to the Health Alliance and do. People may be upset about that because you changed plans, because again, whatever he puts us in tomorrow, I think we're in, but obviously if we're going in a really bad direction, then, you know, we may have to change and go to be more restrictive. But again, A and C aren't very difficult, B is the one that takes a lot of communication.
Absolutely, and my thought is, we may not know by Friday what is going to happen, much less two weeks to the board meeting, but we definitely will know what he says tomorrow and what that type of reaction should warrant. So my thought is, I would like to know what your plan is as soon as he does tell us whatever, you know, I don't know, I've heard both back and forth, and, you know, what's going to take place. But if he does make some type of announcement that definitely gives you clear direction, I would like to know where you are, if you can at least just even put it out into an email to us.
Well, again, I just want to make sure, like, I mean, again, A and C, you already know, and B, we just presented, so unless there's a problem with it, if he puts us in B, then that's it, that's what we're going to advertise tomorrow. It'll be one day a week face-to-face with students, and two or three days, depending on the level and the class that you teach for teachers, and that's what we're going to move forward with.
So my thought is, we just made a decision that if it's A or C, it's done, and if it's B, it's pretty much done, because we've all agreed that that plan should be implemented. So we don't have any reason not to get that out there to the parents unless it differs from any of those, right?
Yeah, that's right. I mean, those are to say, here's A, B, and C, and then the only thing that could happen is you could go more restrictive if things got there, but depending on which one he puts us in, we start moving forward with that tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Didn't we just say we were concerned with option B because of the cases in Cabarrus County? Well, option A is a whole lot less restrictive than option B, so why would we be comfortable with option A?
Well, just to be honest, I don't see how there's any way in the world he can put us in A. So to me, it's either going to be B or C. I guess he could shock the world tomorrow and say, all kids come back together like they always have, but I just don't see that as even a possibility. So if he says A, then, yeah, then we've got a lot to talk about, but I don't really think that's a viable option.
Mr. Walter, two points before we move on. First of all, Mr. Harrison has had a comment out there about taking a short recess before we move into other things. Second is, you mentioned about discussing the August 3rd meeting forum, but again, I think we should wait and make that decision after tomorrow, whenever the announcement occurs.
Yeah, I thought we said we'd wait to see if we were in option three, or what plans, getting all the A, Bs, and Cs mixed up in phase three or phase two. And yes, let's go through the calendar and then let's take our break. Is that okay? Can we make it that much, or we need to break now?
So what did I just hear y'all say? We're going to decide on the August meeting?
Yeah, right now, we're still in phase two. If he says we're going to stay in phase two, it would make more sense to remain as a virtual meeting. If we go to phase three, we should probably consider back to in-person meetings.
I would love to go back to in-person meetings. I'm sorry, but I would. I feel like there's not enough of us in the rooms that make a difference, and we can definitely social distance in the boardroom. I would really like to see us return to, you know, in-person meetings, but that's my personal opinion.
I agree, Holly.
I think you got us to agree with that as well, but let's see what the governor decides at the end of the week here. Okay, can we go through 6.03? Can we make it through that one? And then take our break?
Yep.
Okay. So our academic calendar for 2021. Brian Schultz, John, there you are.
Hey, good evening, everyone. So I just, so this hopefully will make a lot more sense since we just reviewed all the possible options in terms of Plan A, B, and C. So I'm going to share my screen here with you so you can take a look at this calendar update that we have. Things we want to go over today, so the purpose of this agenda item is to give you the updates on the latest potential updates to the academic calendars. We did make some decisions to the calendar, and then based on what the governor decides, we'll have some potential updates that we'll do for the academic calendars as well. So the first goal is to communicate the changes to the Wolf Meadow Elementary Academic Calendar. Second goal would be to communicate changes to the calendar for the early colleges. And then the third goal for this portion of the meeting tonight is to communicate academic calendar drafts based on the reentry plans for A, B, and C that we've just discussed at length. So first up, the Wolf Meadow Elementary Calendar, I know you've all been informed, and that information has gone out to the public. So first up, the Wolf Meadow Elementary Calendar, I know you've all been informed and that information has gone out to the public. So as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic, Wolf Meadow Academic Calendar has been changed from the year-round to the traditional calendar for the 2021 school year. The rationale behind that, there's multiple rationale, but the main rationale for doing, making that decision was to ensure that the Wolf Meadow students receive the same amount of face-to-face instruction as their peers in Caverus County schools. So if it were to start this month, they would start virtually, essentially leaving no face-to-face option to them, at least at the beginning of the school year. So we want to make sure that if that option is available to the students at Wolf Meadow, that they have that option just the same as the other students in, in the school system. Next up would be the early colleges. So again, as a result of COVID-19, I would decide to move the start date for students from August 5th to August 10th. And the rationale behind that is really just to ensure that the, the staff is, has the appropriate amount of planning time to safely receive students and prepare them for the upcoming school year. It just buys us a little more time in terms of decisions being made at state level and to, to ensure that we're able to have a plan in place to make sure we receive students successfully there at the early colleges, as they do come back a little bit earlier than our traditional calendar. So that would be a change from August 5th start date for students to August 10th start date for students. And so I, I think I would probably like to break at this point and just ask if there's any questions about either of those before I go into the potential changes for the academic calendars based on Plans A, B, and C.
Board members? No questions. When does the community college start their classes?
That's a great question. They start on the 17th of August. And so what that start date of the 10th still allows for an appropriate amount of time for staff to bring in the students and orient, say freshmen, to learn the blackboard system that the RCCC uses and to orient them to the classes that they'll be taking coming up next week.
Are those face-to-face classes or have they not made an announcement yet?
I think that they'll be a blend. I think they're set up to do either or. I can find out for sure, but right now I think they're set up to be potentially a blend or all virtual. But I'll follow, I'll follow up with the correct information on that.
Thanks. Any other board members' comments on this part? Okay, move on.
Okay, so the next set of slides will really be around the, the plans that you saw. So Plan A, which is face-to-face, Plan B, which is the hybrid version, and Plan C, which is all virtual. So the, the calendars that you'll see, and I do have, Mindy was able to load those up. We did meet with the calendar committee just today, so, so we apologize for kind of the late uploading of those documents, but we do have that with the, the calendar committee's feedback. So Plan B, or Plan A, I'm sorry, would be all face-to-face. We've updated to reflect the start date for the early colleges and then based on the calendar version without the Republican National Convention. So one thing that we were able to ascertain from the law enforcement is they've been relieved of their contractual obligations with the RNC, so we can already move to that, the version of the calendar that does not include the Republican National Convention the week of August 24th. And you approved that back on, on May 11th, 2020.
But you're making the announcement today.
Yeah, we, we really are, we really wanted to hold off to coincide that information, that public information, to coincide with Plans A, B, and C as not to make multiple changes in a short period of time to our calendar publicly. And so I'm not sure how well you can see this. Again, you'll, you have access to these documents in Board Docs. But Plan A, and this is the traditional calendar, you'll see the, the, this is, again, the, this is the one that you approved back in, in May 11th. So, so this should not look unfamiliar to you, but you'll again, point out right here on the week of August 24th that there is face-to-face school if we are in Plan A the week of August 24th. So really, no changes to this one, as this is the one intact that was approved back in May 11th without the Republican National Convention. Then again, if I go to the next slide, this is the early college version of that, and you'll see that change reflected here with the student start date of August 10th. And again, reiterating the fact that the RCCC classes will begin on August 17th. All right, any questions on Plan A? I think that one's pretty straightforward. And kind of keeping in sync with the, the way we presented, you know, Plan A and then talking about Plan C because they're pretty straightforward, I am going to skip to Plan C. And Plan C is the all remote learning option. The update has been made to, to accommodate those, that change of date for the early colleges. And then based, it's still based upon the calendar version without the Republican National Convention. So essentially, what you're going to see is this one is a bunch of, a bunch of purple stars indicating that those are everything. It follows the same calendar set, same workday, same holidays, and, you know, only notates that every day is a remote learning day. And, and certainly, as, as we've mentioned, we could go back and forth in between calendars. So that doesn't mean that we're going to be in all remote learning all year long. It might be that if, you know, if we go into Plan A or Plan B in October, then we'll come away from this, this calendar. But we wanted to make sure there's a calendar that reflected Plan C for all remote learning. And then again, you'll see the same thing with the early college, purple stars across the board, still, you know, aligned with all of the legislated calendar mandates that we have. So that's the traditional early college, Plan C, all remote. Any questions on any of Plan C calendar? Okay, and then we'll shift to Plan B, again, which this is, is the most complex. But Plan B, I think that you'll see reflects very much what we talked about. The Plan B, the Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, face-to-face options, a third, one-third, and one-third. So Plan B, this, it follows the, the plan described by Dr. Hill. We've updated the early college start date. It is based upon the version without the Republican National Convention approved back in May. And then modifications were made to the month of November, ensuring equitable access to face-to-face instruction. So Dr. Hill mentioned that during her discussion earlier, that we did look at November to make some changes to make sure that students have access to face-to-face instruction during that month on a, on an equitable basis. So we'll take a look. Again, I know this may be a little bit difficult to see, but if you think about the month of November, well, let me, let me point out first that you'll see on all Mondays and all Fridays are those official remote learning days. And then, and up, up here in the plan, we notate that Monday's remote, Tuesday would be the A group day, Wednesday is the B group day, and Thursday is that C group day, reflecting one-third, one-third, one-third. And Friday, again, is that remote. So you'll see that reflected by the symbols that Mondays and Fridays are denoted with purple stars for those remote learning days. And then November, you'll see down here that we actually moved, because we have Election Tuesday on November the 3rd, we moved the A day to Monday so that we make sure that we have three days face-to-face. Everybody that week still gets a face-to-face option. And we did the same thing with the following week, where you see we have Veterans Day on November 11th. So we went ahead and moved that B day to Monday. Again, so every student has access to their face-to-face instruction that week.
So Crystal's chart had the other days also remote days if you weren't in school. Is that, that's correct, right?
That is correct. So if I, if I'm a student that goes to school on Tuesday, then that, that, the Wednesday and Thursday are still remote options for me, but they are face-to-face days for, you know, for the other two-thirds of students.
So if I'm on an A day, my Wednesday and Thursday would be the starts, right? Should be started?
That, that would be correct. And I think that we will have to really work on how we communicate that. I don't think we, the, the school academic calendar is a place to put every single detail because it's going to get really, really confusing. But I do think that will be, it'll be really important to communicate the, the way students go to school. So, you know, if you are on that A day, that Tuesday, then everything else is virtual. So we wanted a way to notate the face-to-face instruction as well on this calendar. So it becomes really difficult. We'll end up with, you know, blue horseshoes and yellow moons and all kinds of things on there. So we want to be as clear as we could be on, on this calendar. All right. And then again, we, we did the same thing with the early college. And what you'll see here, the, the one main difference with the early college calendar, other than the, the fact that they have an earlier start and an earlier end date, is that the only real, you know, caveat with their calendar is the start week. And you'll see four face-to-face days with the start week on the early college and basically doing that so we could bring in each grade level on each one of those four days. So instead of doing thirds, we actually, on the first day, August 10th would go freshmen only. Then August 11th would be sophomores, August 12th would be juniors, and then August the 13th would be seniors. Some really important communications that they'll need to do that are grade level specific and not necessarily grouped, grouped by a third specific. So that was one of the crests of the early college principals to do that. And I think that is probably the right way to start the early college students off to ensure that they are ready for that 17th when they start taking RCCC classes. So that's the only real difference. Then they'll go back to the, the thirds, the A, B, and C on that day. So that's Plan B. Again, it reflects those, those official remote learning days on Monday and Friday. It reflects face-to-face interactions for our A group, B group, and C group on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. And then it also reflects a slight change for the beginning of school for the early colleges. So any questions about that?
Brian, I just have one quick question, and I'm assuming I'm, the answer's yes. But all these plans align with, like, Roland Community College? If any of their, their schedules or how they're going to restart is different, will that impact us? Or we've already got that all figured out?
Well, I mean, if they're, it, it does, so yes, it does align. And if they change, we'll, we will more than likely have to make changes to our calendar to reflect that.
Okay. Well, we just don't really know that at this point in time. For right now, everything aligns with their schedules and we're good.
That's correct.
Okay.
David, you had your hand raised?
Well, I believe Brian needs to go to Plan C, and I'll then ask my question.
Do you want the bullet points or the traditional calendar?
Whatever your next steps in your presentation are. I'll just wait till you're through.
Oh, next step, yeah. So we did all three plans, and then, so my next slide is titled Next Steps. So essentially, you can take formal action on these changes tonight. I, I don't know, and I probably want Brian Shaw to comment on that, but you can vote on the Wolf Meadow changes. You can vote also on the early college changes. Since we did approve, already formally approved the calendars back in May, it's not necessary, but certainly the will of the board, whatever the will of the board is, you can do that. And then in terms of taking a formal action, in terms of the recommendations for Plan A, B, and C, you know, I may be premature to do that, but it may be okay to approve those as well if you want to take a vote on those to just make sure that those calendars align with whatever the governor's recommendation is. You know, my one concern with that is, and Ms. Furtinbaum brought that up, what if there's some variation on that that we're surprised with tomorrow? Well, then we'll have to go back and make adjustments. But so, so the action is really yours to take at this point at your pleasure. I did add some notes there that Governor Cooper is expected to make the formal announcement this week, maybe as early as tomorrow. And then all the planned versions could be utilized. So we could end up utilizing all three of these calendars this year multiple times. So depending on the impact of COVID-19 throughout the, the year. So we're going to be very adaptable and very fluid as, as we have been.
Okay, David, ask your question, then we'll ask Brian, Brian Shaw again.
And I mean this question fairly literally. I believe by statute, North Carolina students are supposed to be in classes 1,180 hours, give or take?
It's, it's a little less than that, but you're really close.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll take that as some kind of compliment. My question to you is, are our 34 and more thousand students each going to receive approximately 1,180 hours of instruction in the 2021 school year according to these calendars? The real point, I guess I'm getting at is that the effectiveness of online training, notwithstanding the number of hours that a child on these Fridays and, I'm sorry, these Mondays and Fridays, if that's the direction we go, I don't think adds up to the same number of hours that they would be in the classroom during the Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. I, I want an exact answer, if you can provide it. In the spring of next year, if we were audited by the state, would we be able to comfortably say and be notified that each of our students were, will have been given 1,180 and approximately 80 hours of instruction in this calendar year?
Yeah, we couldn't say that for Plan B nor Plan C, according to these calendars. You know, one, one of the things that the legislators did this spring was to take very quick action on that. So they basically counted the remote learning as, as fulfilling the requirements of the hours. So they passed that in some of their legislative, legislation very early on. So if, if we go into an all remote situation, or if we go into a, a hybrid situation, I would, there's, there's no way to meet that unless, you know, we're face-to-face. So in my mind, the legislators would have to take some sort of, you know, legislative action to relieve of us, relieve us of that requirement.
Okay, but we're not under the gun or that particular previous statute or, or requirement by the state under the COVID kind of regime that we're in at the moment. We have some, I don't mean flexibility, but we're not strictly under that. We, I mean, we, we've gotten to where we count student hours down to the minutes.
Yeah, we do. We definitely.
Yeah, back in March, we did. And we let people out and bring them in, the bells ring, you know, all to literally, literally count those minutes to add up to approximately those, those number of required hours. On one hand, I, I want to make sure that they get enough instruction, and that's a real point, I guess. But you seem to be saying that the state is, is or is expected to allow for variations or slight variable in, in approximately that, that range of number of hours of instruction.
Sure. Yeah, yeah. And I would base that off of their, you know, their most recent action that they did. You know, once we went to all remote, the, the stay-at-home orders, then we were relieved of that requirement. The remote, in fact, the remote learning, they said fulfilled that requirement. So, so, you know, the, the answer is, I would anticipate a subsequent legislative action that relieved us of that requirement if we were to go to remote in some form.
Attendance can be counted when a kid is in the building and add up to those number of hours. I don't think attendance per se can be counted when it is remote learning. I, I, I don't know quite what I'm completely getting at, but I don't think that we're giving kids the tradition or the traditional or the standard 1,180 hours of instruction at all. And that's not anybody's fault. It's just the circumstances we're under. That's just a general statement. I just want to make sure that we are giving students in the upcoming academic year a very close equivalent to the number of hours of actual training and instruction that they had been getting in the past, and that's all hope that they will be getting in the future.
So Brian, can I make a statement to that? So Brian, can I make a statement to that? This is Holly. And I was actually the one that made the statement about the variation from the, the community college calendar. I don't know how in the world we would be held accountable when these guidelines are coming down from the state and the federal to meet those. And I think it's 1,065 hours seat time. I don't know what, how in the world we would be held accountable for that, nor how we would meet that if they are making the decisions above us and that we're supposedly agreeing as a board that we have to comply.
But they're still going to do testing, is that right? Or they're not doing testing?
But that doesn't affect seat time.
No, essentially it does if you don't have the instruction.
Well, it does. But I mean, if we're saying we're trying to meet hours in the seat, I'm not sure what that expectation would be that would, we, we could comply with that at all, period.
Yeah, I have to agree with Holly. It's a moot point. I mean, I don't think we even need to talk about it. They'll cover it.
Yeah. And we have, if we're all face-to-face, we have plans for meeting all the requirements. And if, if we're not, we won't. And I would expect some legislative reprieve from that. Thank you.
Okay. Brian Shaw, can you weigh in on, can we take action tonight on these calendars?
Oh, sure. I think those, the Wolfmeadow, you definitely want to because those, those are changes to what you're doing. The others, you could either do it now or you could wait until after the governor takes his action. It's kind of tentative in a way. It's defined enough that I think you can take action if you want.
I mean, approve all three and have Chris has the authority to implement any one of them.
Yeah. I, I know you guys said you wanted a break. But I also feel like when I spoke to the Wolfmeadow staff, they were definitely, you know, disappointed. And I'm sure some of them are watching now or paying attention. And I expressed to them that when I conveyed this to you guys, that you guys wanted them to know that it was not to take them off the year-round calendar. This was a COVID decision, not taking them off a year round. So to some degree, for you guys to, you know, express that or whatever, I think would be important because it was important to them. And it was certainly something that I conveyed on your behalf to the Wolfmeadow faculty.
Can I make a motion?
You can, unless we have more discussion.
Well, the motion can lead to more discussion.
It could. Go ahead.
So I'd like to break it into two parts. Let's go ahead and get the Wolfmeadow out of the way. Like to make a motion that we approve the Wolfmeadow calendar for one year. And then next year, we would return back to our normal Wolfmeadow year-round school, as long as COVID's not around. So.
I'll second.
Further discussion? So there's, there's, there's no way to go back into this Wolfmeadow schedule sometime after the spring or, I mean, winter break or anything for the second half of the year?
I don't really think so. I, I kind of told them that some of you guys even suggested that. Again, I think it's more of a good faith that you guys believed in it. But it's just too much change. And after starting late, I think the thing to do is keep it there. But plan on bringing it right back, you know? Because if we didn't, we get out, what, June 5th or somewhere in that location, it would only be five or six weeks before they'd crank back up somewhere in there. So I think this for stability, you wouldn't want to make that change in the middle of the year. But, but I think they appreciated that you guys were trying to figure out how to, how to do that.
Oh, I hate to see us lose the calendar. I mean, that's what some of those folks are going to that school specifically for our year-round opportunities. Okay. Any further discussion? All right, let's vote on that. This is the Wolfmeadow calendar adjustment going back to the year-round next year. All in favor, say aye.
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 Anybody opposed, say no. Okay, that motion passes.
I'd like to make a motion on the other calendars that we approve them as presented.
Early, early college or are you talking about the ABCs?
All of them. All the others.
Okay.
Second.
Motion by Barry, second by David. Any further discussion on those? All right, let's vote on those. So in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed, say no. Okay, those calendars are approved. Can we get consensus to take a 10-minute recess, come back at nine o'clock? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So we will take a break from our meeting and we'll come back at nine o'clock. So that's 10 minutes from now.
All right, so Caroline, I see David. Everybody else back?
I am.
All right, Cindy, Laura, Barry. Chris, Holly, you back?
I'm here.
All right, you guys ready to get started again?
Well, sure.
All right, welcome back. We're continuing our board meeting from Monday, July 13th, combined work session and business meeting, and we are up to item seven, which is the approval of minutes. We had three meetings last month, so we have minutes from our June 1st work session, our June 8th business meeting, and our June 25th budget amendment meeting. Has everybody had time to review those minutes?
I need motion to approve.
All right, a motion, Ms. Burtonbaugh?
Okay.
Second by Mr. Shoemaker. Any further discussion on the minutes? Ready to vote? All in favor of approving our minutes from June 1st, June 8th, and June 25th, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Say no. Okay, our minutes have been approved. We are moving on to item eight, which is Board Chair and Superintendent Comments. I got a few things, just a few things. Just to remind everybody, we are still providing free meals up until August 6th on Monday, Wednesdays, and Fridays at 17 schools and four different remote locations from 11 to 1. So please take advantage of that. We're also hiring. So there's several positions on the HR website on our Cabarrus County School Department page. Please check those out. And then lastly, with the COVID and a lot of the organizations at schools, the PTOs and the bands and clubs have had a hard time raising funds. So there are some easy things that most of us can do. If we shop, we can add, we have the cards, just we can add those numbers. And a portion of what we spend goes to those charities. So the Publix has one, Harris Teeter has one, Lowe's Food, Target, Food Lion, Office Depot. There's also the Amazon Smile Program. So if you buy something off of Amazon through the Amazon Smile, a portion can go to support the schools. My Coke Rewards has something. The Box Stop, they still do those. And then I see the Donors Choose. There's a website there that some of our teachers have put some information up there. You can donate specifically to those causes. So those are my comments. I know Cindy wanted to talk a little bit about the Channel 9 school tools.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The WSOC 9 School Tools School Supply Campaign this year will look a little different. We did have our kickoff meeting with Channel 9 last week. What we're going to do here in Cabarrus County is limit our contact. We previously would request supplies, donations at Walmarts a couple of days during the campaign period. This year, we're going to do drive-through supply donations. Right now, we have three established, and we're working on a fourth one. And I will share these out with the board members, and we'll be posting on our Cabarrus County 9 School Tools Facebook page. And this is in conjunction with the Concord, Afton, Sunset Rotary Club. So we will have supply drive-throughs at the West Cabarrus Y, at the Gemma Theater, at Curbside, at the First Presbyterian Church on Union Street, and we're working on a site in Harrisburg, probably near the town hall there. We also have a Facebook page, like I said, the Cabarrus County 9 School Tools, where you can get information on our Amazon wishlist. And I've had two surprise packages show up already. Had got another one today with 24 packs of crayons. So we really appreciate those in the community who are doing that. And if you do order off of the Amazon list, please make it a gift so we know who it's coming from. Otherwise, we just have it shipped here, and we don't know who sent it. We'd like to thank you. We will also be accepting cash donations through the Rotary Club in the very near future, and that will be published as well. We have two corporate sponsors for WSOC in Cabarrus County. One is Showmars, and the other is Ashley Home Stores. They will have the traditional barrels in their locations. We won't be putting out barrels at all the other sites, as far as I know right now. And we appreciate the school system for allowing us to use some storage space for sorting. We just hope we can get close to our previous numbers because I'm guessing the needs are greater than ever. So this does include Cabarrus County Schools and Kannapolis City Schools as the beneficiaries. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the time.
Thank you, Ms. Burtonbaugh. Ms. Carpenter, are you still on the fair board? Do you want to give an update on the fair? You gotta unmute yourself first.
Well, unfortunately, you've probably all heard, no fair this year, unfortunately. We will have it next year, but due to the COVID, we will not be having a fair this year because of that. We felt that it was due to that for the community and the safety of the community. You know, it takes us about a year to get all this pulled together, and with things and how everything was going, we felt that it was we just, it just could not happen. So last, well, just about three or four days ago, I got that email. And it was very sad for me because you know how much time, you know, that I usually put into that, but we.
Do they have dates for next year?
No, well, it's usually about, usually about the same time each year. It's usually about the second week in September. So, but we are planning on it next year. So we'll look forward next year, but we'll start planning it. We usually start, so as soon as we get over with it in September, we start on it. So we'll be starting on it, you know, for it next year. So we will be planning on it for next year. But yes, it will be canceled this year, so we'll just start up again for next year. But like I say, for the safety of the community, it was canceled for this year. So we'll just plan for next year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Wagner, are you still on the call? Are you still on?
Yes, I'm still on the call.
All right, well, we wanted to, again, welcome you as our teacher representative for this year. Kind of give you, if you don't mind, just introducing yourself, kind of what you do with Cabarrus County Schools, and anything else you want to share with us.
Sure. So my name is Emily Wagner. I'm currently a third grade teacher at our Brown McAllister STEM Elementary School. This is my, I'm going into my seventh year with Cabarrus County, and I have currently accepted a scholarship in partnership with UNC Charlotte in Cabarrus County. So I am pursuing my master's in school administration with the end goal of returning to Cabarrus County School.
Great. We're excited to have you, and we hope to get to meet you in person again shortly.
Yeah, thank you so much. It's an honor to be here.
Okay, that's all I had for the Board Chair comments. Just next to Superintendent Comments, Dr. Lutter.
Yeah, so we certainly like the end of Emily's story there that she returns to Cabarrus County. So we'll hold you to that, right? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a few items to share. Parents, graduates in the community can relive the moments and excitement of the graduation ceremony at the Charlotte Motor Speedway. Video recordings of each school ceremony are now available on the CCS YouTube channel. Graduates and their families also can access the photos taken by the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction and DNP Imagicom America Corporation. We want to say thank you to North Carolina Department of Public Instruction and to DNP ImagingCom America Corporation for capturing photos of graduates and each school's processional that they can use. So again, they were great with that. We got tremendous, tremendous positive feedback. I know a lot of you guys did too. It was not a, the ceremony that we all necessarily thought was going to come, but the Speedway was tremendous, and we appreciate everybody's flexibility from that. It really turned out nice. Cabarrus County Schools graduates also received a special gift before crossing the finish line at the Charlotte Motor Speedway. Every senior received a T-shirt that included the Speedway's logo and was personalized with their school's name to commemorate the day. The shirts were donated by the Dobner Brothers from AAPCO Group. We say, we want to say a sincere, sincere thank you to AAPCO and to the West Cabarrus Y for making this gift possible. And Dr. Kirk, who was a former board member with you guys and staff for us, was instrumental in that. So we want to say thank you to all of them. It was also a nice touch that everybody put together to make it a little more special. Want to say congratulations to the following Cabarrus County School teachers who have been recognized by the National Humanity Center and for UNC Worldview. Jennifer Nichols, a Spanish teacher at Cox Mill High, has been selected to serve on the National Humanity Center as a 2021 teacher, as part of the 2021 Teacher Advisory Council. And Leslie Roberts, the music teacher at Weddington Hills Elementary, who participated in the UNC Worldview Global Music Fellows Program, she created a lesson that's been selected by the Smithsonian Folkways to be posted on the official Wu Fei and Abigail Washburn album page. So congratulations to both of them, both great honors, and that's it for tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Very, thank you, Mr. Dr. Lutter. Over to item nine, which is guest speakers. Again, with our virtual meetings, we're unable to have live guest speakers, but people, anyone from the public can submit comments. Did we get any comments for this month's meeting?
We did receive one comment, and it is going to be read by Brian Shaw, our board attorney.
Okay, Brian, what did we get?
Thank you, Mr. Walter. This is from a comment by Alana Esposito from Huntersville. And here's her comment. Creating equitable, inclusive environments goes beyond anti-discrimination or bullying policies. It involves teaching students how to thrive in a globalized world. This begins by having diverse classrooms racially and economically. At the helm should be teachers who reflect their students. There are a variety of issues that need to be addressed, including but not limited to Cabarrus County must address the inequality that persists in AIG honors AP classes. It must evaluate how its practices are perpetuating such disparities. Curriculum should accurately portray history by getting rid of the false revisionist history that the Civil War was over states' rights instead of slavery. Revise the dress code to not perpetuate anti-black racism by unbanning head wraps and durags. Examine how dress code policies can be unfairly enforced against black and people of color students, especially girls. Have clear guidelines when dealing with racial discrimination and racism that prevents further incidents, like by having anti-racism courses students must complete. Suspensions are disproportionately utilized against black students. This is unacceptable. There must be stringent guidelines that prevent such disciplinary disparities in schools. But even more so, the county should reconsider the use of suspensions at all. They are simply not the answer to students' misbehavior. Look into alternatives like restorative justice, which keeps kids in class and prevents them from falling behind. End OSS and ensure ISS gives students the resources and access they need to do better and address underlying issues that contribute to behavior violations. Evaluate the type of environments metal detectors and SROs create and the impact on marginalized students and how they are weaponized against said students. This includes keeping SROs out of administration, referrals to enforce school policies, or other incidents occurring in schools. To keep schools safe, students need increased access to mental health resources. The Glenn Center is setting up students to be unsuccessful. To heighten the disparities, it mainly has poor and marginalized attendance. It is a rundown building, and the kids there are treated like criminals. It removes opportunity, sports, clubs, advanced classes, et cetera, and reinforces the idea that the focus should be on punishment, not education. There simply are too many kids there who need more help than a school full of kids who are desperately asking for intervention with limited counselors can offer. Cabarrus County must ensure equitable schools and actively become anti-racist. That's the email.
Thank you for those comments. Anything else? Was it?
That's it for this one. Yep. I don't, I don't know if there's any other one.
There were no other ones submitted.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on to our action item, our action agenda. We have eight items on the agenda here. 10.01 is Policies on First Read. We've got Brian Schultz again and Ms. Sue Burns. Either one of you on the line? Brian or Sue?
Yes, I'm here and Brian's here, sure.
Hi, it's evening again. I still left out without my Cabarrus County Schools background, so I added that at the break. So hopefully.
You gotta do that.
I can do that. All right, so we have, we do have 10 policies on first read. Of those 10, two of them are new policies. The other eight are revisions. So I know those have been sent out, and we did receive a couple of comments and questions from, I know, Ms. Burtonbaugh. So I guess I would just, instead of reading all of them off, since there's so many, if there's any one that you have a particular question about, that you'd like to discuss, we'd be glad to pull that up and review that. These, all 10 of these have been through the Policy Committee and have been referred on to the Board for Action.
Yeah, why don't we go through them one by one and see what we got?
Sure. So the first one is the Title I Parent and Family Engagement.
Case.
It is essentially required, it's aligning with every child or every School Succeeds Act, ESEA, federal legislation.
Okay, board members, have any issues with that? Okay, we'll vote on all of them at the, to move on at the end of the list. What's the next one?
Okay, that's Policy 1610 and 7800 Professional Staff Development. There's a requirement for professional development on child abuse and sex trafficking.
Board members, questions on that one?
No.
What does a two-hour child sex abuse and trafficking education look like? Is that online?
Yeah, so we have done some work on that already. Amy Jewell is actually the lead for that. And so we serve on, actually, a county task force for that. So it's an educated piece. I can't, wouldn't be able to tell you all the details on that.
Is it something we do in-house, or is that some vendor that we use to provide?
We're doing it in-house.
Okay, so we have to develop it once the policy is in place?
Correct. But I will tell you, we are ahead of the game on that, for sure, within our county and within our school district.
All right, next one?
Yeah, it's Policy 2127, and that's the Board Member Technology Use. Further delineates the use of district technology related to social media accounts, personal email accounts and such.
Can you bring that one up?
Sure. Do you have that? And that is one of our new policies. This is not a revision, this is a new policy.
And Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to share that when we got this the first time, maybe a month ago, I requested that any monitoring of board member emails had to be approved by the board attorney. And that has been added at the bottom of, or near the bottom of Page 2.
Is there a typo there in the last sentence, paragraph one?
On page one?
Board members are expected to abide by, the board members are expected to abide by generally accepted rules in network etiquette.
Duplication, yes.
Yeah, duplication. I was looking for typo.
We'll take care of that.
Yeah, I think on page three of five, I don't think Google Plus exists anymore. I think they got rid of that.
Okay, we can update that to whatever it is.
Any other comments on this policy? All right, Brian, let's move on to the next one.
Okay, that's 2440. It's Policy Review and Evaluation. So a lot of times, as you have recognized, we have policies that are technical changes. And so what we'd like to do is move the authority to approve those to the superintendent without bringing those to the board. And typically, those are technical changes that are updating the footnotes that relate it back to a previous policy. Ms. Burns, what other, what other technical?
Yeah, so, so the technical ones would be a change in a legal reference if a new law.
Bring it up?
I'm sorry?
Can we bring that policy up as you're talking about it?
Sure.
So if you look at the, at the bottom, you can see where it says legal references and cross-reference, at the very end of the policy, yeah. So where it says legal references, if they, if they add a law or they take a law away, then our legal reference would change. Cross-references, if they add a new policy, and that would now be cross-referenced in here. So it's nothing that changes the body of the policy. It's only the technical references at the end.
I think that's a smart move because how many, sometimes we had 10 or 12 of those one month.
Yeah, and we have quite a few lined up pretty soon. So it just makes sense. So you guys aren't bogged down looking at technical changes. We can just take care of that. And then we can, you know, we give you the list of what they are, you know, we can give you any information you need on it. But it just doesn't bog down the policy process.
Yeah, this is Brian Shaw. I think I might have recommended this just to save everybody a lot of time when we have maybe 30 policies and 15 or to 20 of them might just be an update to, the state board policy number has changed. Or maybe there was a typo. And so the thought is, let the superintendent do that, but to have them report to the board in advance so that if the board, for some reason, has any concerns, then the board can take action to revise it before they go into effect.
Can we also add in there to publicize it somewhere, like on the website?
Yeah, we could. I mean, that would probably be added in where we do policies up for review. I can add in there, the following policies will have technical changes. You know, we can just do that in our current process.
That sounds fine to me, but as long as there's an opportunity for people to see what we're doing.
I think I see Mr. Harrison's hand is up.
Ms. Burns, for example, in this one we're looking at here, some, you know, time in the future, I might look at a policy and think, well, I didn't change that back in August of 2020. But the only change was some small grammatical, as you say here, non-substantive update. Can we, if the superintendent, according to this policy, changes other policies, and those policies say August 2020, can some very brief notation be put beside it? Minor grammatical changes approved by superintendent or something like that so that historically, we look back and see the last time it was changed, or previous time it was changed, it was not substantive, and therefore, the board didn't see it and did not have a, have involvement in, you know, the changes which are, again, non-substantive.
That's a good question for Brian Shaw. Can we do that? Can we put more notation at the bottom?
Yeah, I think a way to do it would be to say, for example, let's say the May 14, 2001. Well, of course, that's, let's say that had been just a superintendent revision. I'd suggest we say May 14, 2001, parenthesis, superintendent revision.
Very, very brief, correct.
And then, because otherwise, we're looking sometimes in the past for the minutes of certain board meetings.
Right.
And we won't be looking for those. So we identify that it's a superintendent action rather than the board action.
Right. And that way, we would see that the policy has been largely consistent since the last time the board reviewed it, even if minor changes have been made in between.
Yes. And a good example, Mr. Walter found that duplication of language on a first read. Well, that escaped a number of us. And what if it had escaped everybody until it had actually been enacted? And then sometime later, somebody saw it. And what if it had escaped everybody until it had actually been enacted and then sometime later, somebody saw it? This policy would enable the superintendent to correct that duplication. It's non-substantive.
Okay, any further comments? Are we okay with this? We'll move on to the next one?
Sure, the next one is Policy thirty four ten, Testing and Assessment Program. It's a strongly recommended revision. It's based on state legislation, it's aligning with that state legislation. I do, I think it's probably worth noting that, under this legislation, that it would, it directs boards in even numbered years to review all local standardized testing administered to students in the prior two years. And, and then if it exceeds the state average, then the board must take remedial action. So I think that's worth pointing out in that policy. So it's really just, you know, I think the intent is to ensure that we're not at the local level adding on excessive exceed with averages at the state.
Is that a report we already get or is it something new you have to develop?
I don't know, that would be an accountability question that I don't know if.
No.
I can find the answer to that.
Anybody else have questions on this one? All right, let's move on to the next one.
Okay, the next one is, again, more alignment with state policy as a revision of the graduation requirements. And it really aligns it to some of the legislative requirements. Two substantive changes that have been made recently, or actually three, so CTE would be one. Just the requirements for CT and some changes there. There've been some changes made around social studies and that includes changes to financial literacy courses. So this essentially lines up the graduation requirements to include those changes for students over the next few years.
And that's the rising ninth graders, the other students their grandfather done? Is that right or remember?
That, that's correct.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Don't mean to catch anybody, I'll kind of, I don't mean to catch anybody off guard, but it seems like the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction is, has been reviewing social studies curriculum for a while now. I know this table is talking about the number of credits for graduation and I won't get on a soapbox, but I really do wish the parents of Cabarrus County would get down into the weeds of seeing what their children are required to take and what the curriculum is and what some of the proposed changes to the curriculum, especially with social studies, is. And I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Anything else on this one? All right, next?
Yeah, the next one is forty one ten Immunizations and Health Requirements for School Admissions. So that requires, it's an additional booster vaccine, the MCV vaccine, for students entering twelfth grade after August first of twenty twenty. So this takes effect-
Is that just for face-to-face or is that? Is that, because it looks like it goes into effect right now, right? So for this school?
It goes into effect August first, twenty twenty, that's correct.
So is this a problem for these kids getting that during the COVID situation we're in now?
I'll reach out to John Massalise on that and see if we can get some sort of Health Alliance, bless you, Health Alliance, update on that to see where we are.
Okay.
I have not, I have not heard of any complaints to this point. However, there are some other things that have dominated the health conversation lately.
Right, but you've got twenty-five-hundred kids that need to get this thing done.
Right, it's been, it's been out there for a while, it's been communicated, I've seen it communicated in several public locations. So I can get an update on the pulse of how that's going.
Okay. Other comments on this one? All right, moving on.
And it's Policy fifty thirty and that's a community use of facilities. So this just adds, it includes turf fields and stadiums into the fee structures. We've worked with the, you know, as you all know, we've worked with the Cabarrus County Visitors Bureau in this. They've been fully informed. We've worked with our athletic directors at each school who have had a tremendous amount of experience with this. And so it's just revising the fee structure and includes the turf field and stadiums.
And no discount, right? Cindy, do you have some comment on this one?
Yeah, I just had the question, which is clarified, I was going to provide for the board, that how do we define stadium? So stadiums in this case is meant to be football stadiums where there are artificial turf fields. So in the event that we have a turf field outside of a stadium, there may need to be a change in wording. But at this point, Kelly said there will be two different forms for facilities used rental. One will be the one we currently have that doesn't include anything with turf. And the second will be specifically for the turf field. So there will be no discount on the stadium and turf field usage.
Thanks for the clarification. Any other comments on this one? All right, next?
Okay, the next one is our other new policy and it's seventy seven forty. That's publication or creation of materials or other products by employees. And this is in a draft format right now. This was a board request for a policy to provide guidance as to ownership procedures for publication or commercialization of employee-developed materials.
Brian Shaw, can you give us a little overview on it?
Sure. There had been a situation in the last year or so with some employees were interested in perhaps commercializing a product, some software, had some connection with Cabarrus County Schools or their experience at Cabarrus County Schools had some impact in their development of it. And it raised the interesting question of who had rights in these types of materials and did the board own them? Do the employees have the right to create them? And so we looked into the situation. There was not a lot of guidance at the K-12 level on this issue of of materials created by employees. There's a lot of, quite a bit of guidance and policies at the university level. And, and we looked, so we came up with this, well, with some input from some K-12 policies that really weren't quite as extensive. But also, we looked at UNC Charlotte, UNC Duke and NC State to come up with some guidelines. And basically, to the extent that the policies were created on time, while a person's working for Cabarrus County Schools or with materials or assistance from Cabarrus County Schools or based on work in the Cabarrus County Schools, then it's really, the school system has, would have the rights there. And the, the deep, that's just an overview, the language is more precise. That does not mean that employees might not be able to pursue and develop some products, but that it would have to be with school system approval and perhaps an identification of who would have, how those rights would be shared or what should be done. So this was a first draft to, to get the board thinking about this. And it's been presented at a policy committee meeting to ask administrators to see how this might impact them. And we'd like to get all your comments and then take them back to the next policy committee meeting and see if any adjustments need to be made.
Thank you, Brian. Board members? Comments, thoughts?
I think it's a pretty solid first draft. I honestly think we can approve it on first reading to get something on the books. And then if there are further comments from administrators, adjust it later.
I think we almost need a live situation where we compare, you know, proposals from staff to the policy to be able to see if, we've covered a lot of the obvious bases, but it's a very strong draft that our board attorneys have helped pull together as well as Mr. Shoemaker's input.
Well, Mr. Harrison, I did use, when I was reading through it, the thoughts from our previous discussion on why we even need a policy like this. And I think it meets that test.
Any other feedback on this policy? Are we okay to include it in the group for first read?
Absolutely.
I think so, yeah.
Okay, next one?
The last of the first read policies that we have is eighty-three fifteen Capital Assets. And essentially, what this policy is doing is bringing this up to speed with the new software that we have that Kelly's been, will be implementing into our district for the state. And so it just aligns some of the items as well as some of the useful lives period and as well as some of the financial items.
Okay, I think I asked that before, I don't quite remember what the answer was, but the cafeteria equipment is currently, you can have a life of twelve years for it, that comes down to just ten years in this new policy. Is that, that doesn't create any issues?
No, sir, this is Kelly. So we've talked about this with our auditors and our attorney, of course, and we're just aligning it to be more consistent. What a capital assets policy does is it divides the value of the asset over the number of years. In a enterprise fund, that impacts the bottom line, their profit and loss, because they do have a profit and loss. On a non-enterprise or government, it's just a different set of statements that are provided for viewing, not much else. So it has a minor impact on the profit and loss over a period of time, but it's not anything. We're trying to be consistent and align with everybody else in the state. And the policy hasn't been updated for quite some time, but it, so it just better aligns with the useful values of the equipment that we currently have.
Okay, that's a good explanation, I appreciate that. And the software, you eliminated that too?
Yeah, I'm not sure how that even got on there. That's one of those things that I didn't notice, but it just, we don't capitalize software, we never have. So it just needed to be struck out.
So it doesn't affect anything that we're currently?
It does not, because we don't have anything capitalized that's software.
Great. Anybody else have any other questions on it? Thank you, Kelly, I appreciate that. All right, so we have ten of these, I guess, as a group. Do we want, can I get a motion in a second to approve them on first read?
I'll motion to approve.
A motion by Ms. Burtonbaugh, second by Mr. Harrison to approve the ten policies on first read. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, say no? Okay, those pass and those are moved on. Okay, moving on to our next agenda item is we've got some on second read. Brian, you, Sue?
Still here. All right, so we have four policies on for second read. We've got Policy twenty-three oh two, which is remote participation in board meetings. Policy forty-four hundred regarding attendance. Policy seventy-five oh three, which is a new one regarding teleworking. And lastly, we have Policy seventy-six twenty, which is payroll deductions. We have put those out for the public to review. We have received no comments on these policies and we'd recommend for approval.
Okay, anybody want to ask any other questions on these four?
No, just Sue normally does this, but on twenty-three oh two, because there's so many additions and removals, just double-check the formatting so it doesn't look wonky.
Yeah, sure, I'll do that.
And who keeps my attendance, so to speak? Who keeps the record of the number of times that I've been online or?
It's in the minutes.
Well, does the policy define? Well, you'd have to still call back through multiple minutes, though, wouldn't you?
You would.
And Ms. Burtonbaugh, if it would be easier, oh no, because this is in second read. Yeah, I'll just double-check to make sure it all works.
Yeah, that's fine.
Sorry about that.
Okay, can we approve these on second read as a group or do you want to do any individual?
I'll make a motion that we approve these on the second read.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Shoemaker, second by Mr. Harrison. Any further discussion on these? All right, let's vote on approving the four for second read. Please say aye if you agree with that.
Aye.
Aye. If you oppose, say no. Okay, those four have passed. Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.
All right, so we're moving on to item ten point oh three, Alternative Accountability Model. Mr. Fail, are you on the line with us?
Yes, good evening, everyone. As you know, each year, we're required to get board approval for the accountability model used by our, by our alternative learning schools. For the twenty-twenty-one school year, after speaking with Jim and Beverly and they with their staff, both schools have chosen option B. Do you guys have any questions?
Have they always chosen option B or is this the first year of this?
The PLC has traditionally gone with the traditional model. This year, after discussing with staff and taking a closer look at the options, he chose option B as well. I think it's a wise choice.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment, I thought we normally had the completed form. This is just the, like, blank form.
Upon your approval, we'll make sure you get the completed form for your signatures.
Yeah, I think just Rob has to sign it, but.
Okay, any further questions?
Maybe he doesn't even have to sign it, yeah. Just, yeah, if we can just get the completed copy so that we see what actually is filled out.
Not a problem.
Thank you.
All right, we would need a motion in a second to move this forward.
So moved.
Okay, do you have a motion by Mr. Harrison?
Second.
Second by Mr. Shoemaker. The alternative accountability model be approved as presented? Any further discussion? All right, let's vote on that one. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, say no? Okay, that motion passes. And before we leave, Matthew, did you get the question we had on one of the first read items?
You have to remind me, I've been listening throughout, was it a question specifically directed to me?
I think it was. Brian, can you help me out with that one? Or is Brian Schultz, has he left?
No, I'm still here. So it was the question regarding reporting the local assessments to the state. So the legislation that was passed, gosh, I don't know how long ago it was, but we just revised the policy to coincide with that legislation that requires the local administrative unit to evaluate the number of local assessments that are administered and then we report that to the state and then that's every two years. And then if we're over the state average, then we are to take remedial efforts. Do we have a, I guess the question was, do we have a process in place for that already?
I see Krista on the line too. I would say that's a function of, you know, sort of joint curriculum instruction and accountability because we complete our testing calendar together and once it's completed, we submit it- together, and once it's completed, we submit it to the state. I would say that in Cabarrus County School, we do, we do what's needed for the students in order to determine how to best help them achieve academically. We don't, in comparison to the state, I'm pretty sure they haven't reported an average, but if they did report an average, I'm pretty sure we'd be under it.
Yes, my, my other question was this. Is it a report that we already see, or is this a new report you have to create for us?
We submit the assessments that we give every year. I find it interesting that the state says if we're below the average, we have to, you know, sort of do something different when they haven't given us an average, to my knowledge yet. But we do send them our, the tests that we do every year, we send it to the state.
All right, thanks.
Matthew, I'll send you that, the policy, so you can take a look at it. And then if there's anything further we need to report, we can, we can do that.
All right, thanks, guys. I appreciate the, the help there. Moving on to 10.04, the Alex Secondary Math Subscriptions for 2021. Dr. Hill?
Hi, yes, good evening. You have before you the quote for Alex subscription for the 2021 school year. The amount of the quote does exceed the amount that the superintendent or his designee can approve. So this evening, I've asked for your approval for the subscription.
Okay, board members, any comments or questions?
I'm trying to pull up the budget that was passed in the spring, and I, I hope I'm asking a good question. Did we originally budget Alex at $340,000 and here have negotiated a discount of $63,000? And where does, does the $63,000 difference, you know, go into fund balance or something like that? Or, tell me how that works. We had, we, did we originally budget in our formal annual budget for Alex, and since that time have negotiated the free materials, which then is put in fund balance?
Mr. Harrison, I'm sorry, I don't understand your question. This, I've not ever come to the board requesting additional funding for Alex. Perhaps you're speaking to the budget request that came to the Budget Committee for an expansion for instructional materials. That budget request actually came from the, at the school levels, from their school improvement teams. And I presented that to the Budget Committee. But no, this is, this is going to be purchased within budget. We use our textbook funds to purchase this item.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Why are they, why do they give us the free materials?
We've been a longstanding partner with Alex McGraw-Hill. Over the years, they've worked several discounts in for us. The most recent one has been with our I-3, our second I-3 grant. They served as a match for us. So for Empower Schools, they gave us several free licenses. Our I-3 grant has been extended through the end of 2021 school year. It was supposed to end in December, so they are granting us additional free licenses as a part of their match for the Empower Grant.
Gotcha.
What did they charge us for Alex last year?
Last year, we paid, let's see, in 1920, we paid $249,417 for 612. Let me explain what happens with Alex. We have purchased Alex for several years as a district, because several of our teachers use it. And we determine the number of licenses that we need based on previous usage. It is not a required, we do not require our teachers to use it. We purchase it, it's available to them. So last year, our mass specialist, our secondary mass specialist, Carl Sane, did a lot of work with our teachers and professional development, showing them how they can use Alex effectively. And as a result, several of our teachers started using it. So last January or so, when we changed semesters, I received a frantic call from Mr. Sane saying that we had actually run out of licenses, because so many teachers had picked them up with first semester. So Alex was so kind to grant us for the remainder of the school year, additional licenses, so we did not run out. So based on our usage from last year, we've requested additional licenses, so we don't run out this year. And that's an explanation for the increase in the price.
And, and I know that this is, what, we use this for 6 to 12 for math. What do we use for the other grades? Is it, what is it we use for math for the other ones?
Yes, it's so confusing, Ms. Carpenter, because we've changed for the last three years several times. But this is the second year in a row that we will be using iReady Math.
iReady? I, I knew there was something. I didn't know if it was a dream or what. I, I know that, yeah, it's kind of been, I know we use different things, but that's what I was curious about. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, last chance for questions here on this one? If no more questions, we'll need a motion to approve the Alex Secondary Math Subscription.
I make the motion we approve.
Now, second?
Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Carpenter, and a second by Ms. Furtinbaugh to approve the Alex Secondary Math Subscription for School Year 2021 in the amount of $279,720. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no? Okay, that motion passes. Thank you, Dr. Hill. All right, we're moving on to 10.05, which is the Mount Pleasant Elementary School Easement Agreement with Duke Energy. Mr. Louder or Mr. Taylor, are you here? Yeah, there's Mr. Taylor?
Yes, sir. Facilities management department is requesting that you consider, approve, and sign the easement agreement attached. This is for the Mount Pleasant Elementary School property, and it allows them to access the property for both scheduled and unscheduled maintenance.
Do you have a map you can pull up, or the diagram?
May for approval.
Back in.
All right, so we have a, there's the map, so you can see where the, where the easement would be.
Yes, sir.
A motion by Ms. Grimfley, a second by Mr. Shoemaker. Any further discussion on this item? All right, let's vote on it. Everybody, anyone, all in favor of the Mount Pleasant Elementary School Easement Agreement with Duke Energy, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed, say no. All right, that motion passes.
Thank you very much.
All right, so we're moving on to 10.06, which is the A133 2009 Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment, the building package. And we have Mr. Louder, Mr. Cohn?
Good evening, Mr. Walters, members of the board. Throughout the past five, six months, we've been working very closely with Shellco, our construction manager at Risk Firm, and YCH on budgeting and pricing exercises for the new middle school project. On June 11th of this year, Shellco received their bids for the building construction package. There were 45 total individual packages received for the project. Each one of those bid packages had a minimum of three bidders in each package, with the exception of two of them. As the general statutes require, there has to be a minimum of three bidders. If there's not, we have to re-advertise the project for seven days and then rebid those packages. We did that on two of them, the fencing package and the landscaping package. Back in the April 20th board meeting, we had approved the A133 standard form of agreement between the owner and constructor, and referenced that it would be amended twice. At the June 8th board meeting, we amended that, we've amended that contract the first time for the early site package. And tonight, we are requesting approval on the second GMP amendment in the amount of $38,868,361. This approval will allow the construction manager at Risk Firm to begin obtaining the necessary permits required for construction and releasing certain entities for their shop drawings and approvals on the footings and foundation.
So the total price for the middle school project will be?
So the total, the total price for the middle school project, including the First Amendment and this amendment that I'm asking for approval on tonight, will be $44,772,38.
So that's the bottom line number for the school?
That's the bottom line number for the total, total GMP for both amendments.
Right. This is Kelly. I just want to clarify, that is just for the construction of the facility. That doesn't include furniture, startup, or any of those costs. So the total budget of the project will be more than that. This is just the construction and site.
Thank you for that clarification. Mr. Cohn?
Yes, Mr. Harrison.
Have, in your normal processes, do we survey other school districts in the region to try to find an apples-to-apples comparison to get any kind of confidence level that, that approximately this amount is fair market price or a good price for the square footage? I mean, I know there's too many variables to really make it strong comparison, but do we, how good do we feel about this price? We know you, you had multiple vendors and bidders, I understand that, but have we compared this project to other projects around the region to see if we were in line with similar type schools?
Yes, sir. We, we try very hard to obviously identify other districts and the facilities that they're building. One, as you have referenced, just to, to use as, as a guideline for maybe what we should be doing. But two, it's to establish a benchmark of maybe what the, the overall budget of that project should be. We were fortunate, back in the first quarter of this year, down in Fort Mill, South Carolina, there was a new middle school that was bid. It was similar in, in size and population. It was an 800-student school. I think it was 160,000 square foot facility. The, the, the square foot number for that project came in at $250 a square foot. So early on in the year, when we started our pricing and budgeting exercises, that was when we felt like we might be over our, our original budget of $43 million. As we worked through value engineering on the different pricing exercises with Shellco and YCH, and identified areas that we felt like we could, could save, we had whittled that square foot number down on our project. Now, our square footage went up because, one, we have more students, with, this is a 1,200-student school. So we have 193,000 square foot of total space, including the mezzanines and all the interior air handling rooms. You take that square foot number by, divided by the, the, the total GMP, and we're around $231 a square foot. So we felt very good that we were able to, to get down below what our original square foot budget was, even though we have more square footage than what we had originally anticipated. We had really good, you know?
That's still a good price per square foot, kind of in recent history, isn't it, for this region?
It's, yeah, it's a very good price. So we, we felt very, very good about that. Shellco did a really good job, you know, advertising the individual bid packages. We had nine, nine mechanical contractors bid on this package. And, you know, that's, that's really unheard of, because, you know, when we do a normal hard bid delivery method, we unfortunately don't get the luxury of seeing how many bidders are actually coming to the table.
And, and correct me if I'm wrong, this will be our second contractor at risk?
This, this will be our first school, I believe, that we've done construction manager at risk.
Okay, excuse me.
And, and I'm not sure if Tim can speak to that, or Kelly, but I believe that's correct.
I think your existing administration building was done construction manager at risk several years ago.
Yeah, that's correct.
Thank you all for your work.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Mr. Cohn. On page three, there is a construction contingency allowance, and there's a CM contingency of 2%. How will they be used the same or differently?
So the construction contingency allowance is the portion of the construction allowance that we had broken out from what normally is in place with the county that allows us, if unforeseen items pop up, or if there are changes that we feel need to be made during construction, that is, that is our money to do, do that with. CM contingency is the, is the money earmarked under the construction manager for what we call scope gaps in the work. So if, in their bid packages, something got missed, the CM contingency will be requested to us to be utilized for that scope gap, so that it can cover the, the shortfall in costs. The good thing about either of those contingency is at the end of the project, that 75% of that money comes back to us that is not used, because we have a split savings on the contract of 75% to the county and 25% back to the general contractor. So it's in everybody's best interest to try and not use any of that contingency money, because it comes right back to us.
Okay, so in a collective sense, then, we have just over $1 million of contingency?
Correct. And, and we still have, we still have available contingency on the county level as well, if something major comes up that we, you know, if, if, you know, God forbid, we have water all up underneath the building, or, you know, any of this, any of the, the, the issues we've run into on some of our other projects.
Okay.
And I think also outside of this, outside of this, we have a, an additional funding, funding balance for the, the road improvements, which we're still working through with MST and congestion management on finalizing the TIA and what those requirements will be. All in all, I think we're, Tim and I both feel very, like we're positioned very well at this project right now.
There's just an awful lot of exclusions at the bottom of that list.
The standards for most contract, then?
Yeah, I know. Let me get to.
It's fine.
So, so the exclusions, we can just talk through them real quick, Ms. Furtinbaugh. The road widening, again, I just spoke to that. You know, we, it's a balanced site, so that's why they excluded any importing of soils. We don't haul off any soils, because we're, we have the ability to waste all that material on site, whether it's in berms or under the athletic fields or practice fields. Testing and third-party inspections is always handled internally through the county and on our side, so that's always excluded from the GC's scope of work. Any modifications required by code review. So if DPI comes back and has, has a change in, you know, either a glass style, or, or adding doors, or if we have to add exit devices, or whatever it may be, those obviously are excluded and are a change to the, to the scope of work. Plan review fees are all handled under the, the architectural contract. Utility company fees typically, again, will, will handle all of that if there are any impacts on that. Site furnishings are always handled under our FFNE accounts. Again, handling or hauling off any unforeseen debris, so if they uncover rocks, or whatever they may find buried out there.
And Brian, you don't have to go through every one. I just was a little concerned that there's a lot of exceptions, and maybe we just see them in paragraph form other times, and now we have a list, so.
Right.
Pretty much the standard exclusions we have on almost every single contractor we have with a construction contractor, even under hard bid situations.
Other than the pandemic exclusion.
Right. I did notice that exclusion as well.
All right, board members, did you get all your questions answered? And I would need a motion to approve the guaranteed. And I would need a motion to approve the guaranteed. Yes?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we will have to kind of do this in conjunction with the next item, because we can only approve this, we don't have the money yet, based on approval by the county of the additional funds. So it can't be a hard approval, at least my understanding.
Kelly, you have anything to add to that?
So, yeah, technically, it'd be best if you approve the, the request for the funds, because the county has approved that contingent on your approval, so once you approve it, then it'll, it'll become approved, and then you'll have the funds, and then we can obligate the contract. So technically, yes, that, that is the, the better order.
All right, so we should move over to ten point oh seven, and then come back to ten point oh six.
So has the county voted, Kelly, or they just approved in principle?
No, they voted.
Okay.
A contingent.
It's on consent agenda for their meeting next Monday.
Oh, I thought. Okay, so they haven't.
We did not, so because of this, we did not ask for them to suspend the rules at their work session, and it got put on the consent agenda for next week.
Okay, thanks, Brian. So we can go ahead and approve the contract now, contingent on the county's approval?
Yes.
So make a motion to approve the, I'm on the wrong item here, sorry. Make a motion to approve the guaranteed maximum amendment building package as presented, contingent on the approval by the county commissioners at their next meeting.
Second.
You have the extra dollar request?
That'll be a second motion.
All right, so we have a motion to approve the guaranteed maximum price amendment building package as approved, approved as presented with the contingency that be approved by the Cabarrus County Commissioners next Monday.
I seconded that.
All right, so we have a second by Mr. Shoemaker. Any further discussion before we vote on this? All right, let's vote. On approval, on, on approval of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed to the motion, please say no. Okay, that motion passes. All right, so we're now on ten point oh seven, which is middle school construction funding request. So we're asking the county for an additional one million, seven hundred and seventy-two thousand, thirty-eight dollars.
That is correct.
So that would match up with the previous item?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion that we approve this request to our county commissioners, and I believe that Mr. Cone said it's on the consent agenda for their next meeting.
Second.
Okay, so a motion by Mr. Shoemaker, second by Mr. Harrison, to approve the additional middle school construction funding request as presented. All in favor, please say, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed, say no. All right, that motion passes, and we are to our last item. Fantastic, okay. I, ten point oh eight, which is a road name change request, and that has to do with Harris Road Middle School. There's a request to change Patriots Plantation Boulevard to Harris Road Middle School Drive. So Chris, you want to add anything to that?
I can speak to it, I can tell you how we, how we got here, whatever you would like me to talk about.
All right, I guess we can, is there, is there any further discuss, any discussion on this item?
Yeah, we do need to discuss this, absolutely. So tell me, I kind of got lost in the emails on where the request came from and the, I heard community, I heard it was some individuals. Tell, tell me exactly who requested it.
So we had a complaint from, or we had someone call to the county office to Ms. Fur, who usually takes complaints, and said that a family had a child that was going to Harris Road Middle School, and they, I think grandparents and the whole family were going to look at the school, and when they got there, they were shocked that the name of the street was, had the word plantation in it, Patriots Plantation, and considered that inappropriate and very unwelcoming, and so they wanted to see what they needed to do to get that changed, and called a community member. The community member called the county office and told us that, that this was one of many complaints about the name Patriots Plantation, and wanted to change it, and we're considering, you know, doing some things to get it changed. And so we just said, well, we'll look at that and see. We found out that it is not a city road, it's not a county road, it's totally ours, so we control it. Nobody knows where the name came from, so as far as we know, doesn't have a, any kind of context, other than, we're not able to define where the road came from. And so my recommendation would be that if we have people that are about to go to middle school and feel like that that is not, is preventing them from being welcome there, and we can change the name of the road, that we probably change it. So my recommendation would be to change it. There is some, I think some people even asked, we do have an elementary school named Patriots, so there could be some confusion there. And so since it's Harris Road and it's the drive into Harris Road, my recommendation would be just to change it into Harris Road Middle School Drive, that way you don't have any overlap. But I certainly am, you know, open to, the board is usually, you know, it has the right to name, so whatever you guys would like to name it, we would certainly be open to.
So I guess the real issue that I have is, I mean, I feel like we will be setting a precedence for making a change upon just a request, and not, I, I would not want anybody to feel offended ever, but this is not a cheap change, as we found out previously, when there we had a request several years ago to make a change, when it's addresses, nine-one-one, you know, lots of different things play here. I have a real hard time, I mean, I think we could pick words to absolutely death when it comes to some of this, and I feel sure there's going to be others out there that can pick some other names, and we're going to continuously open this up. You know, if you read Webster's dictionary, it's very generic on what that is, it's the amount of acreage, you know, it's an estate. I mean, I'm thinking, there's lots of issues here, and there's lots of areas, even in Cabarrus County, that has that name in there. So are there other subdivisions, other areas being asked to make that change, and they're willing to make it? You know, I, I worry about the funding, I worry about the precedents we're going to set here, you know, to have to rename lots of different areas and buildings and roads, and I, I just feel like we're opening up a can of worms with that.
Holly, I don't recall when you were talking about how much money it costs, because if it's an internal road, it's different than if it's an external road. So it's our private property owned by us and the county.
We still have to, I mean, there's a charge that comes with changing the road name, no matter what, I mean, where it's located. I mean, that's not, and, and the real, I mean, I don't have a dollar figure for that. If you do, please share. You know, I want to make sure that other community members would be represented as well, that if that was an issue somewhere else, that we would have to honor their request. I mean, I just feel like, if, I, I'm not sure where we start and stop with these types, we've never had this to come up ever before, and that school's been there how long?
Yeah, I actually don't think we ever even named it, that the board approved that name. I think that was probably something.
But evidently, it's our responsibility to change it, so I don't guess it's, to me, it's a moot point how it got named. My thought is, you know, if we take, and, and I, I never want anybody to offend, to be offended, I try to be fair in, in anything that we take a look at, but I'm just thinking, is this a huge community push to have this done? Or is somebody else going to be offended that we change it or change, you know, what? I just feel like we're opening up some areas here that we'll have to address this with other things, and people will be able to say, well, you did it for them, or you did it for that reason. That one didn't have near the connotation that something else does. You know, I just feel like we're going to continuously address that, and that bothers me. You know, we did have a request early on, when I was on the board, and we refused to do that. So, you know, saying that we made the change a couple of months ago at that one meeting, that was not, that was not the same change to me in why we did it, it was in a positive manner. So I, I just have a problem with us doing this, you know, without it being, to me, and invalid is defined in many different areas for different people, but I just feel like that word is so many places and so many other things within this county, within the state. Is everybody changing that word? Is everybody going to take that out? And, you know, are we the first, or are we going to run in line with, I, I just have a real issue with that.
Do we know what the cost was to change the road at Mount Pleasant?
No, it's not, Miss, I told you guys in the email, that the money that we spent to change at Mount Pleasant Road was minimal, and I would say this would be minimal, so they'll, you know, it'd be the sign, there might be some stationery, it could be, Tim will have to get some of that changed with the city, but I would, you know, the best that we know, that, that it wouldn't be very expensive, it would be very, very minimal, just like the, the one at Mount Pleasant.
And what address is reflected in the nine-one-one, when they, when they, do they use that road mainly for nine-one-one?
This is Tim Louder. Chris asked me to look into this, and the one in Mount Pleasant was different, because it was our driveway, we still have the same address as, as we always had on Pine Street, okay, it's the same address. We just have a driveway named after someone, and it's, that's not our address, the driveway is not defining our address. In this case, this drive does designate our address. And, and I had talked to the city of Concord, to the city planning department, and, you know, Chris and I had backed, Dr. Louder and I had backed around a few names of what we could do, could we just shorten it to Patriots, Patriots Boulevard, or something like that, but unfortunately, there's like a Patriots Court, there's a Patriots Point, there's a Patriots Place, and there's several of those already in Concord, so just dropping the Patriots Boulevard probably is not an option. And that's where we kind of talked about the Harris Road Middle School Drive, where it would not maybe be a conflict. I have sent that name request to Cabarrus County, the G I S department there, and it's Brandy Webster's in charge of that, of course, she's not in the office, she has to do it in my email. I have requested her to at least, to, to look for that name and see if it's duplicated anywhere else, and I doubt it is, because we're a middle school drive, but that has to go in there, she has to accept that as a unique number, and then reassign it to our school and put it into the G I S and the nine-one-one system as our permanent address, so that it will not mess up things that people come in and ask for, you know, go to this school at Harris Road Middle Drive, and it doesn't show up in G I S, it's not anywhere on the docket, no one would be able to get there on G I S purposes, or for their G P S or anything like that. So that all has to be done, there's not a lot of cost to it, it's just a paperwork issue and to make sure they've done it correctly, so that people can find the school should the name get changed.
So Tim, basically, you're waiting on us to make a decision? So you've already done all the homework you need to do?
I'm, I'm waiting on the county to come back to me and say that that's an acceptable name.
All right, so.
That is, I'm sorry, Barry, but the deal is, that has to be approved by the county, because it is a road that identifies our address. It's not just a driveway, or, you know, that, when you, when you create a road that is your actual address, that has to be approved, so that, Tim, am I wrong, that will have to be approved by the county before we can even actually change that?
So our motion, the request to the county, or our motion?
You can vote on requesting the county to change that name, then I have to still go through the process. You get sued to the county and it says, I'm sorry, that's not a name that's available to you because of another conflict somewhere else, then we'll have to come back and ask for another name, but.
Why don't we table this till next, next meeting?
Well, I, I guess what we need to do, well, I guess what Dr. Louder and I both are requesting, what's the name you would like for me to ask the county to be? Do we have to give them a name that we want it to be, in order for them to check it out? And to make sure it's okay?
Yeah, I think it's Middle School Drive, because of having a Patriots school already on the other side of the county.
It's a unique name, you know, it identifies the school, I think that's fine.
One of, one of the things, I, I spoke to the lady in that addressing department myself, and she suggested to give two suggested names when we submitted, and that way, if one of them didn't work out, maybe the other one would. And I had done a lot of research on this, first of all, trying to find out if there was any history at all on that original name, and I went in our, our, I can't even say it, archives, trying to find out, and again, I couldn't find out where it came from, and I am just, I, I don't want to offend anybody either, and I don't want to open up a can of worms, we don't have to either. And I, I'm thinking Harris Road Middle School Road or Harris Road Middle School Drive, give them both of those. But again, I have, I have said, and y'all know from day one, I don't like naming something after somebody. I like to give direction, so somebody knows how to get somewhere. Let's make it simple. And that's, that's as simple as it comes, it's saying Harris Road, it's saying school, it's telling somebody how to get there.
Carolyn, would you like to make a motion on that?
But, yeah, I'll make a motion. I put those two names in there, Harris Road Middle School Road or Harris Road Middle School Drive, and that way you got two choices to give them, but that's, that's a motion.
Okay, second by Mr. Shoemaker. Okay, now, further, any further discussion on that? All right, so we're voting on a request to change Patriots Plantation Road to either Harris Road Middle School Drive or Harris Road Middle School Road, and it's a request to the county to change the name. Okay, so all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no.
No.
All right, so we identify the noes?
Laura.
Okay, Laura? Anyone else?
Holly.
Okay, so we have a, it was a five to two, with Holly and Laura voting no. And that actually comes towards the end of our, our meeting, finally.
Mr. Chairman, we never did decide on August meeting, are we going to wait to see what the governor does?
That was what our conversation was, is let's wait to see if governor puts us into phase three or not.
Okay.
So we should know that fairly soon. With that, I mean, again, thanks, a lot of good discussions tonight, you all stuck with it, relates from our longest, longer meetings of the year, but we'd like to end the meeting, so we'd need a, a motion to adjourn. Who gave the motion?
I did, Holly.
Everybody. I seconded, though.
David seconded, okay. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Say no. All right, we want to say goodnight to, to our viewing audience, and thank you, everybody, from staff and, and board members for sticking with us tonight.
Thank you all.
We'll see you again on August.
Goodnight, guys.
Goodnight.